All right. I call this planning, special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to order. Today is Monday, August 18th. Time is approximately 6:02 PM. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Board Member Archad and Board Member Carey on the second. Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? Any from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes. All right, we will, what?
Number Thomas is out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And Ms. Kathy Thomas is out tonight. All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Naem, if you could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there's two items on the consent agenda. The agenda from July 7th meeting, planning zoning minutes from the July 7th meeting as well. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Board Member Archad and Parker on the second. There's no discussion on the consent agenda, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimous. All right, moves us to agenda item number three, Public Hearing and Ordinance, this future land use map amendment from Alachua County Rural Agricultural to Material Oriented Industrial. And Mr. Attorney, do we have something to read into the record before we go?
Yes, we do. It is ordinance, the proposed ordinance of 2025-35 CPA 25-06, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91, it's amended relating to small-scale amendment, future land use plan map with the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan, providing for change in future land use classification from Alachua County Rural Agricultural to City of Newberry Material Oriented Industrial on certain lands within the recently annexed corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.6 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict provided in effective date, the appropriate motion is to pass this measure on to the City Commission, which is ordinance number 2025-35 CPA 25-06. Penance reading by title only.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
John Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Paul Perez, the Newberry Community Development Department. Give me a sec here, I need to advance the slide. And there we go, awesome. I'm going to provide the recommended motion and then get into the basic information about the request before the board this evening. The recommended motion is to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the small-scale future land use map amendment, and the first reading of the ordinance will be on September 8th, 2025, starting now sooner than 7:00 PM. The applicant is Demerit On Demand LLC, doing business as Civil On Demand, as agent for the owner, Laura J. Pries, and a company called Smirna is involved in this but has not joined the application. The request is for a small-scale future land use map amendment for a property that was recently annexed into the city, so it was previously unincorporated, Alachua County. So it currently has county future land use of ag, and they're requesting that ag land use be changed to material-oriented industrial. There's a companion rezoning application, joining this application, it'll follow this presentation, and that is a request from County, or, yeah, County Agriculture A to City Industrial I. The site is 9.6 acres, its address is 710 Northwest County Road 235. And here's an aerial image of the property. As you can see, it's part of the, or connected to 41 Commerce Park, it has a roadway extended out to the property, and in the red dashed line is the current method by which people are accessing the property over a dirt two-track road. So even though it's addressed to County Road 235, it's primarily accessed from inside 41 Commerce Park, and that's something that we'd be looking to carry forward with any development plan that should be forthcoming, that access be maintained from 41 Commerce Park. On the property is a mobile home, and the property also abuts the CSX Railroad. And here's a plat of 41 Commerce Park, and in here you can see the platted roadway of Northwest Ninth Place, extended out to the property. Water and sewer are also in that general vicinity, so they're able to connect. And here's the current future land use of County Ag and the proposed material-oriented land use. And I just wanted to get into how the city defines ag and how the city defines material-oriented industrial. So in the future land use element, the element describes agricultural land use as those predominantly used for crop cultivation, specialty farms, and dwelling units, and it gets into more of the agricultural uses, and it identifies intensive agricultural uses, something akin to a feedlot, which would be an intensive agricultural use, or Southern Fuel Wood would be another local example of an intensive agricultural use, or material-oriented, really. And then in our definitions in the Code of Ordinances in Appendix B, it defines material-oriented industrial development as being dependent on natural resources found in agriculture classified areas of the city, and includes raw agricultural products, materials, or activities that are proximate to the site. That connection to CSX Railroad is kind of an extension of proximity, and so we understand, while not part of this application, that a majority of the goods coming into the site will probably arrive on rail, and then will exit through roadways for local distribution. That is still to be seen, though. We looked at level of service, potable water and wastewater, electrical services, solid waste, and parks and schools. We found that there's available capacity for this increase in intensity of land use. And we did find the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. And again, our recommended motion is to recommend adoption of this ordinance. And again, if move forward, whether it's a recommendation for approval or denial, the first reading will be on September 8th. And the applicant's here, if you have any questions?
Perfect, you got the recommendation, okay. Okay, well, it's a pleasure to the board.
Just for the record, JP, if you don't mind me just kind of making it in layman's terms, this is kind of just an extension of the property that they already currently have, just right next door, correct? It's not too far, like, it's not like all of a sudden it's a whole different.
Yeah, and that was the purpose of me showing the connection to Northwest Ninth Place. It was designed in a way to allow for this extension, with the rail being a natural barrier and also resource for this property. It happened to be occupied as a, for agricultural, single-family home, but as they've annexed in, they're looking to kind of complete that 41 Commerce Park development pattern.
Yeah, I was just, for the citizens' peace of mind, that we're not just throwing up another concrete plant or something in the middle of nowhere, this is literally in the industrial park, fits right in, it's nothing too crazy. That was really, I just wanted it for like the record, like in layman's terms.
I also want to reiterate probably a concern, this is not going to ever connect to County Road 235 and add trucks onto that road.
That is our intent. The property is addressed to 235, but we would implore, plead and beg with the applicant that 235 not be, become a primary method of dispatching vehicles from the property, that they utilize the existing 41 Commerce Park and those roadways, which are designed for that type of activity, and use that as a method of dispatching vehicles from the property.
Do you know if there are plans to improve that road that they are going to use? Because I know I've driven back there and it's like a dirt road. When they used to have fireworks back there, man.
Can I add something real quick? Sorry. My understanding is the person, when they access that property, they're accessing it way north, because railroad crossings are like an act of God to get, and so unless they know people, I don't think they will be accessing it through there, because you have to close two to open one, or three, close three to open one. So I don't think there will be the ability, at least now, not in our time. And additionally, the access back there will be brought up in a minute when public comment comes up. Thank you.
Yeah, the, yeah, the great off of that is, would have to be addressed in order to really get a commercial truck in and out. Yeah, if you look at the, if you like Google that address, you got to go up 235, almost a quarter mile, go over the existing track, and then come down a very, very unimproved, unimproved access, it's not, it's not even a road, so they would definitely have to come in and out of the Commerce Park where they're currently coming in and out of already. Any other comments, discussions? Ms. Carey?
Yeah. I, I'm asking specifically because if you actually zoom out of this map, you will see that the Newberry Oaks neighborhood is directly there, within a half a mile. So are we having a noise study and an environmental study because of the health impacts?
At time of development plan, that's where we're going to address the impacts. Up until that point, we don't know what those exactly are, it's just a...
Can we make a recommendation as it's conditional based on those?
That might be an example of contract zoning, where based on the performance of certain obligations, that the zoning's okay, or the land use is okay. It would be my recommendation that we address the impacts as the applicant has brought forth an application showing what those impacts are going to be.
As I live in that neighborhood, including some other people in this community, there's thousands of people in that community, and we already have impacts from other associated issues, and we're surrounded by ag. That's why we purchased that area, the agricultural center is there for the county. So that, that's my concern I want to voice, is that the last one that we approved for NC Ranch, those studies were available for us to actually look at, discuss, so that we could actually have a well-thought-out understanding, because this will impact not only property values by putting it within a half a mile radius of people's homes.
Absolutely.
So that is my voice concerns.
So good comments with regards to the site development, when that actually comes through, right?
Yes, sir.
And I, I mean, just looking at the plan, maybe we can relay to the applicant, forcing the noise creating stuff to the northwest or the western part of the property as much as possible?
I just want to point out that that northwest corner of the property, directly about the southeast corner of Phase 5A of Avalon Woods, and so that'll be somebody's backyard as well, even more proximate than the Newberry Oaks folks that you don't see on this particular area.
That's true.
No, I looked at that as well, but I didn't know where the phasing with Avalon Woods is. I don't know the phasing because that was being done before me, so that, that's a very good addition. We, we need to be mindful of those communities that are being built still.
Absolutely. And if it is a batch plant, as the application examines the use of the property, it'll be through special use permit, which comes before this body, and with that, we always ask for, especially with a special use permit, for them to demonstrate through data and analysis how they're going to mitigate those, and so they need to show, like was shown with the NC Ranch, the, the sound studies, topology maps.
Okay, perfect. That's all I wanted to know, because I wasn't part of that initial vote, I know it's been a process there. My second question is, just as a clarification for the community, although it's listed as mining as a segregation category for this, there is no mining permitted, correct? It's just the purpose of the mixing that they're asking for, correct?
Correct, yes. Now, mining is a liberal term, borrow pits is something that gets classified under mining as well, and...
What I mean is no blasting. We already have enough blasting from the county property that a lot of us didn't get noticed when we purchased our home. So that's why I'm making that clarification for my fellow neighbors in Newberry Oaks.
Blasting would be a step too far.
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate that.
All right, any discussion from the public? Does the applicant want to come forward and speak, or I think? Oh, yes, sir. I couldn't see you. Fire away. Would you just state your name for me?
My name is Will Lloyd, speaking on behalf of Swanee Valley Feeds.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, appreciate your time. So there is some confusion over the access, I would like to get that cleared up. My understanding is that the access through 41 CP, and by the way, Swanee Valley Feeds owns 15 of the lots in 41 CP, including lots 10 and 11. We've got a surveys affidavit stating a couple of things. One of them is, and this is recorded June 14th of 2007, there are two items here, but the second one, the street labeled Northwest Ninth Place, which was previously referenced or mentioned between lots 11 and 10 should be omitted. So I'm not 100% sure that that's been done, but I do think there's a considerable confusion there, and when we purchased the property, my understanding was that that was not a legal access to the, either one of those lots in the back.
Will, will you click the button, back one?
What do I got to do?
On that little clicker, will you go back more? So basically, what Mr. Lloyd is saying is, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what Mr. Lloyd is saying, that one right there, is that green shaded area shouldn't actually be there, it's not an access point. Now, I would say to the P&amp;Z, we have one entity that, that has a plat that shows it's a road, one entity that says it's not a road anymore. I think that this is going to be a title search, and we, they can answer this question before it goes in front of the commission. Clearly, the answer to that question is going to have tremendous consequences on how this project moves forward, if this project moves forward. I think what Mr. Lloyd wants to do is just get it into the record that, according to his paperwork, that is not an access road, and that is a landlot.
Lots do own, Mr. Lloyd?
All of them.
We do not own lot 20, we do not own lot 1, 2, 3, and 6. The rest of, the rest that we do?
20. 11.
Correct. And so just to be clear, I, my comments have nothing to do with the issue that you're voting on today, in fact, I'd probably support that, I just think we need to get on the record and get this access cleared up.
Can I, can I ask you a question, sir?
Yes.
If I may, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So the person who's living on that lot, how are they accessing that property? Are they going through your properties illegally?
Well, again, if I'm correct, and there's no legal access there, then they've been accessing that way, and when we purchased the property, there were no trespassing signs, we've had added some, and basically just given up, that it wasn't that big of a deal, but I do want to get it on the record with the new owners coming.
Well, yeah, because there's a big difference between that and 50 loads of cement coming through there.
Sure.
And we just talked about there's no access on 235, so yeah, we would have to make that clarification. Thank you for coming forth and saying that, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Just want to add that when these applications come in, we don't get a complete search of public records, a title opinion, or something to that effect, so this is an unknown to us. According to Alachua County's property appraiser site, this is still a public right-of-way, and so whichever manner it was abandoned, we're unclear, and we'd be interested in seeing that, that document before we proceed, and also making the applicant aware that there is no access except for on 235, and as in my presentation, 235 would not be a desirable way of getting vehicles out of the property and utilizing, especially for such an intense industrial use, using the existing industrial park as a method of dispatching vehicles.
Do you know if the applicant was aware of this access issue, if we should call it that?
I don't think they would have submitted an application, yeah.
Go on up, sir.
The applicant has paperwork that shows it's a right-of-way, that shows it is, that's why they, we got to, we got to clear that up.
Yeah, we were just made aware of this just a moment ago, and I appreciate the opportunity to agree to discuss this, and as we move forward, if that does come to light, but one of the first things we do is an alta survey on the property that we put under contract. The survey's been done, and we have had a title search, and our title search says at this point, that entrance, that address, because we actually would be achieving, this is the address that we were given that would go to the property, is that Ninth Avenue or Ninth Place is, is street. So we just need to sit down and take a look at our paperwork, and sit down with this gentleman, and we've, I think, agreed to do so. We'd like to ask that we continue forward with the zoning at this point, and that if this does present a conflict, we have two other meetings that we can withdraw. We do not have any desire to go out of the back of this property across the railroad tracks, it's not good for us either, so.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah.
I have a question.
So that could, you know, from that standpoint, take the deal off the table, so.
Okay.
Okay.
My question is more for our legal on this, if, if a motion goes through and it continuously proceeds, and then later on, we do find out that there is an issue on that, what, what ends up happening at that point? Do we have to come back to the drawing board? Does our motion completely fall?
They would withdraw.
You would just withdraw, I wouldn't, okay.
There's a whole lot going on there, so when you're landlocked and you have property, and there was some discussion earlier about it was being utilized, so there's easement by prescriptive rights, there's easements by necessity, a platted subdivision doesn't automatically become abandoned, there has to be some affirmative act, because we sign off on that, it gets recorded. So there's a whole lot going on there, but having said that, that's mostly private property issues that would be between landowners here as far as enforcement or enforceability the right, the right of way, so we'll leave it to these gentlemen to figure out, they have the option to cancel the contract, I don't know if they've closed on it yet or not, but if they haven't, they can cancel the contract and say, hey, that's too much for us, we don't want to deal with all of the prescriptive easements, or the, or the easement by necessity, or the platted road right-of-way, and, you know, it's up to them, so they can withdraw down the road or proceed on.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public, then?
I was just, if it's okay, I know a couple of the questions that came up, I'd like to address those.
Please, please, yeah.
So we are currently operating on a site next to the subdivision I think you live in.
I know exactly where you're operating.
Right, so we would close our operation and completely dismantle that antiquated equipment at that location, and move to this location with new equipment, and I think I'd love the opportunity to chat with you about what that means, because the technology today and a new plant versus what you see today up there is completely different. From the standpoint of blasting, I can tell you there will be no blasting, we'll do no mining on this site. We will bring in aggregates and cement, put it in the truck, and mix it as we go down the road, but we're just basically, we're on a leased piece of property, and our intent here is to invest in Newberry with somewhere close to $18 to $20 million worth of equipment, and substantially much, much better technology in what we do, and that investment is also for us to make the investment in this community, to be part of this community going forward, because on leased property, as anybody knows, if you're leasing, you're there at the landlord's request, and, you know, we, we think Newberry deserves a good quality company, being part of the community, and we feel like we can be that partner, and we look forward to not only continuing our business, but growing our business here.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Yeah.
Okay, vote passes 3-1. That moves us to rezoning on the same property, and Mr. Attorney, do you have something to read there?
Yes, sir, this is the rezoning component, which is ordinance number 2025-36. An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Alachua County Agricultural A Zoning District to the City of Newberry Industrial I Zoning District on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.6 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict provided in effective date. Proper motion would be to pass ordinance number 2025-36. Penance reading by title only.
So the item three, just change the future land use map, this changes the actual zoning on the same property. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you. This may be a quasi-item?
Yeah. Anyone who intends to...
Pardon me?
...speak on this issue. We'll do all the quasi, anything that's quasi. If anybody intends to speak this evening on any of the matters, if you raise your right hand, stand and raise your right hand, you swear affirm, tell the whole truth and nothing but...
I do.
Good to go. Everybody's been sworn.
Okay. And this is on our, all our rezonings?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did we get everybody? I'm sorry, I was looking down. You got everybody? Okay.
I think everybody stood.
All right, so as we enter into quasi-judicial procedure, this means the commission will, or the board will stop being a legislative body and will become a judicial board or judicial advisory board, which means that we will follow certain rules and adhere to the different standards of decision-making. Primary rule, we must follow concerns testimony, and substantial incompetent evidence standard must be met when the judicial advisory board makes a decision. This standard states the following, all public testimony will be taken under oath, everyone testifying will subject, will be subject to cross-examination, all documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence, the giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts, closing arguments will be limited to the evidence or records. The attorney has already sworn everybody in, as we go through, we'll read the ordinances as they come up, and before we begin, we'll need to disclose any ex parte communications and disclose whether any member of the board has physically inspected the property ex parte communications, are any conversations or transmission of information that may have bearing or influence on any voting member's decision. So let's go ahead and do that now. Ms. Carey, do you have anything to disclose?
I would...
Okay. Okay, Ms. Paul, Ms. Parker?
I also live in the community, if that's any kind of situation.
Okay. All right, very good. Now, I'll explain the order of the presentations that we will follow for the, for every quasi-judicial item before us tonight. We'll have a staff overview, an applicant presentation, staff report, recommendation, then we'll have public comment on each of the items. The applicant may cross-examine, the party interveners may as well, which have not been alerted to any, staff may cross-examine as well, members of the decision-making body through the chair may ask questions of the staff, applicant, or participants, and then final argument will be made by all three parties related solely to the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and introduced into the record, so only that stuff. The city attorney will advise the decision-making body as to the applicable law and the factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application, deliberation of the applications, and after the deliberations, a vote will be taken. To approve, approve with conditions, continue or deny the application. So we are back at the order, a staff overview, correct? That's where we are?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, John Paul Perez, Community Development Department. The request before, I'm having trouble advancing the slides. Thank you so much. The request before the board tonight is rezoning from County Ag to City of Newberry Industrial for a recently annexed property. The recommended motion is...
The recommended motion is to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the rezoning. And first reading will be held on, sorry, I should say September 8th, in conjunction with the land use. The rezoning can only happen if the land use happens, so they will follow as companion items to each other. Forgive that error. The applicant is Dirt on Demand LLC, doing business as Civil on Demand. Current owner is Laura J. Pries. And the request is to rezone the property from Alachua County Agriculture A to City of Newberry Industrial I. And it's a 9.6 acre site, 710 Northwest County Road 235. Sorry, I have to go through all this stuff again. Here's an aerial image of the property and the underlying plat showing connection to Commerce 41 Park, the current zoning of, I should say Agriculture A, and the proposed Industrial I. And piggybacking off of the level of service analysis that was provided in the data analysis report included with the future land use map amendment, concurrency will be determined at time of development plan review, in which we will crest all the adequate studies to demonstrate, you know, impact mitigation and adequate facilities exist to serve the proposed use. But as it stands, level of service is sufficient to support this particular zoning district. There's my statement on concurrency. And staff finds the request consistent with the Conference of Plan and Land Development Regulations. Again, we are recommending that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend adoption. And if so, first reading will be on September 8th. Thank you.
All right. Is the applicant presenting anything separate? Or are we resting on your staff report?
They haven't provided any separate presentation for the board, that they're available for any questions if they'd like to come up and answer.
Okay. Any public comment or anything at this point? Seeing none? And nothing you wanted to contest from the staff's report or anything like that? Mr. Parker? Okay. All right. Fantastic. Members of the decision board, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
I have a question. John Paul, did we not agree to do a notice to 1,000 feet out versus 400 feet previously?
Notices for, perhaps that was for the special use permit. That code amendment hasn't made it into the code yet. The only instance that we do notices 1,000 feet out are for properties that are agriculturally zoned or land used, and they are surrounded entirely by agriculture. Then it goes out to folks within 1,000 feet.
That's where it was, because I was like, it's agriculture. So I thought, okay. Surrounded by.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Ms. Carey?
I had a question regarding, because I know this is quasi judicial, so it's different. Can we make a motion that is conditional on the studies and the right of way, so that we don't have to revisit this again? Or does it have to come back to us?
This, correct me if I'm wrong, this part wouldn't come back to us as a zoning change. What the next step would be is the development order.
It's not necessary. It's like, no, doesn't matter. I understand that correctly.
So, and Scott can?
It probably doesn't make, it probably doesn't hurt anything.
Mr. Chair, I would actually say, you can't do that. You can only do what's in front of you today. So there will be a time later where that would be an absolutely 1,000% appropriate condition to put on the motion, but you can't condition the zoning on, you don't have the site plan, you don't have the actual business right now. So you can't condition the planning.
Right. What I was trying to say is if there's no right of way, then they're not going to be able to actually build the site. So it would basically save us to have to revisit it again.
You won't have to revisit it, because they'll withdraw, and the commission won't let it happen either. You know, so no one's gonna let it, no one's gonna let it go through if they don't have a driveway.
And then my second question is to clarify, because I thought it was 1,000 feet period. I didn't realize it was just for Ag. So the notice that we moved from 400 to 1,000 is just for when Ag's surrounded by Ag?
Yes, because the problem is you have very large Ag parcels, whereas here, even though there's Ag, it's also surrounded by other things. It's when the whole development is surrounded by Ag, that's where you'll get a 400-foot wide property. And so that's why we talked about putting that to 1,000 feet.
Okay. My only caveat with that was that there's residential within a half a mile. And I think if the neighbors in my community, which are very vocal, knew about this, there would probably be a room of people that would be voicing their concern.
Well, we also put signs out. We also put ads in the paper, I'm sorry, in the Alachua County website. There's multiple ways that we notice. It's just one piece of it.
Stacy, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just saying, like, it's just to do our due diligence, especially when we're expanding so much in this community, that if we're going to expand an industrial park, that going above and beyond for our community makes us stand out as the transparent and accountability city that we are. That's my only caveat. I totally support us growing our community, but I also want to make sure that every person has a voice, that maybe are not normally in tune with what's going on in the everyday of our community.
Mr. Chair, by my, because I was here when that motion went through, I was the one that actually suggested the 1,000 feet. And at the time, at staff's request, because we do try to be very fiscally conservative and responsible with our money, if we did go with 1,000 feet, and this was smack in the middle of a residential area, for example, like right at Hopeview Middle School, the amount of money that staff would have to spend to put up signs, mailers, all that would be largely, I mean, more than double, because now you're going from 400 to 1,000. So that's why when we were here and staff recommended it, it's like, hey, can we keep it to 1,000 for Ag, 400 if it's industrial or surrounded for rez? And I understand your community. I have friends and family that live there, that they are very vocal. But I feel partly guilty, because I was the one that was here when I said, hey, 1,000 feet, but to the defense of staff, you know, the amount of notices that would have to go out, I mean, especially with Avalon Woods stacking on top of everybody. It's gonna be, the cost is ridiculous, but now with the amount of technology that's available, there's really no reason, especially with Naime that shares everything under the sun in Newberry, there's no reason nobody knows about this.
If you want to know, you'll know.
You could know, but there's the people that are vocal like us, we are the vocal ones here, and that's why we're part of it.
I just feel part of blame.
No, you're not to blame, no. I'm just speaking up for those people who can't. And I, if it wasn't impacting property values, like I actually researched on this, then I probably would just be like, okay, like, yeah, it's smack dab in the middle, it's definitely away from it. But there's a lot of impact, and this community specifically has had the not the most honest situations because of the mining situation. People who have bought the homes secondary or 30 have not been noticed because of Florida state laws. So I'm just trying to go above and beyond for the local. I'm not trying to pinpoint, this is not staff's problem, this is not the applicant's problem. This is just me trying to be as vocal for our community for those who may not aware. And I can't go on my Newberry Oaks and go, hey, come to this meeting, because that would be breaking the law, and I don't want to do that. So I just want to make it vocal that if there are ways to make it to where there's opportunities to do this right and transparent, we're gonna do that. That's all.
Yes, I agree. And I just did a measurement, and 1,000 feet wouldn't have reached the neighborhood, but it got enough people around there. Plus, we did notice the folks to the north, because they were within the 400 feet. It's whether or not there was a lot purchased or not yet. May still be the same owner for the Avalon Woods folks.
Okay. I lost track of where we are. We're still asking questions for the chair, right?
May I add to what Barbara Carey is concerned? We now have a GIS person, and that GIS person maps all of our projects. And she just turned one of our maps about future projects, public facing. And so tomorrow, we'll send you a link, so you can track or share with folks. And this includes applications, not just stuff that's scheduled for a public hearing. And so folks will be able to see on the city website, different projects that are under review and whatnot. And that may give them, hopefully, ample time to prepare if they have a rebuttal or have any interest in projects coming forward.
Ms. Carey, I'm not sure what you were referring to as being illegal about sharing on the Newberry Oaks page.
When I double-checked what I can, specifically within sunshine guidelines and so forth, I could not go initiate a post to announce, hey, come to this meeting, because it could impact our community, because if someone engaged with me, then I would be breaking sunshine law. That's the way it was documented.
I don't think that's true.
Sunshine law would be like if I?
Yeah, I understand, but because there's other members in my, in our neighborhood that are on the board, it could be construed that way.
She, as long as she doesn't respond to your post, you're fine.
Is that correct?
I didn't want to even test it. I didn't want to even test it.
So I will, I will say, someone that is an admin on these forums and does engage civilly with a lot of our, with a lot of our citizens on topics and hot topics at that, I would support 100% you engaging a private group like that to let them know, hey, there is this meeting about this. Like recently, I had posted, hey, guys, utility rates is on the discussion. I've reached out to all citizens. Now, if member Parker started commenting on that post, that's where a sunshine violation could start happening.
Correct, but I didn't want to invite that.
I understand. I'm just, I mean, I didn't want you to think that it was illegal for you to do that.
No, no, I just, I just know that.
Because I want to encourage your residents to be aware.
I know there are people in our community who are, and I know even sometimes you're still part of that group.
No, I'm not. They kicked me out.
Okay. Well, you were at one time. So, I mean, and this isn't to go, I just wanted to be careful. I'd rather, if anything, I'm more conservative than anything. If you haven't got that from me, I just want to make sure that everything is by the law.
My only suggestion would be to post in the group and say, I'm just sharing that there's a meeting here.
Well, I'm gonna share this post, so like, when he gives the map, I'm gonna say, hey, go inform yourself.
But I will no longer discuss it. I'm just sharing the information. I'm choosing, like, I cannot have a discussion about it, but I would like you guys to be informed.
As a safety precaution, what you can do as well is when you make that post?
No comments.
You could, you could disable, as the poster, you can disable the comments and ask the admin not to reopen those comments for the fact that you don't want to violate sunshine law.
Okay.
So I think what you're trying to do is amazing, and similar to what I'm trying to do with the citizens.
Oh, absolutely. Like, I can't agree more. I just.
And I promise not to comment on your post.
Well, I couldn't even text you saying, please do not to comment on it, but like, but thank you. That's why I said that, yeah. Thank you.
Any other further questions from the board? Okay. Da, 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 da. Final arguments? Are you gonna rest on your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Applicant, you rest on the prior presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And then we are to the city attorney advising the decision-making body of the applicable law.
On all of the quasi judicial matters this evening, it'll be competent and substantial evidence standard.
Okay. All right. At this point, we'll entertain a motion. Does a member want to make a motion?
So.
All right. Ms. Parker's on the motion, Mr. Urchad on the second. If there's no other deliberation, all those in favor signify.
Public comment? Now that you have a motion, you have to go back to the public.
I don't have public written on here anymore. There you go.
Final argument, and then deliberate on how to vote. Show me.
Anyway, any further public comment? It's not on my cheat sheet. Anyway. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it unanimous. All right. So moving on to number five, large-scale future land use map amendment from Alachua County, rural to, rural agriculture to City of Newberry agriculture. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-50, CPA 25-20, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91 as amended relating to a large-scale amendment to the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference of Plan, providing for a change in land use classification from Alachua County Rural Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres, to the City of Newberry zoning category agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida. Parcel number is 02515-004-003, consisting of approximately 111 contiguous acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date. Proper motion is passed, ordinance number 2025-50. Penance reading by title only.
Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Paul with Community Development. The request before the board tonight is a large-scale land use map amendment, meaning it needs to go to the state. This is for a recently annexed property, 111 acres, going from County Ag to City Ag, so no change in an intensification, and our land uses are generally very similar when it comes to Ag. The recommended motion is for the Planning and Zoning Board to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the future land use map amendment. And the first reading will be held before the City Commission on August 25th, next Monday, sooner than 7:00 PM. The applicant is Patrick M. Post, and he's the only one involved in this application, no agent or anything to that effect. The proposed, or the request is a large-scale future land use map amendment from agriculture to agriculture, I should say there. Sorry about that. There is a companion rezoning application from County Ag to City Ag. And again, the property is 111 acres on the west side of town. I'll show you an aerial of the property. And so here is the subject property. And so that's the boundary of it. And in red here is the outline of everything else that Patrick Post owns contiguous to this property, so it's generally a whole block and happened to be the one property that wasn't in the city, in this little, in this block of property that he owned. The yellow arrows show how the property's accessed from State Route 26, Newberry Road, coming into the property, and it's generally just vacant at the moment. There are some piles of things on the property, but nothing truly active at the moment. So the current future land use is rural agriculture from Alachua County, again, annexed on August 11th. And then the proposed is City of Newberry agriculture, so no real change in the colors going on there, or the intensities of development that are allowed. So given that, there's already an accepted level of service for the property. We did some light analysis. There is available capacity on State Route 26 to serve the current use of the property. Potable water and wastewater are not available to the site, but should they become available? And should the development of the property be appropriate for it, they'd be required to connect? I think that's probably pretty far off at the moment. It's in the Central Florida Electric Co-op for electrical service, solid waste capacity available, and for parks and schools, which is dependent on there being residents on the property, has a potential of being 22 dwelling units, but at the moment, it is zero dwelling units. We'll look at that as that comes through. Staff finds the request consistent with the Conference of Plan and Land Development Regulations. And again, the recommended motion is to recommend adoption of the ordinance. And this does need to go to the state, so after it goes to first reading, we'll get authorization from the commission to send it off to the state, goes for a 30 to 45-day review and comes back. So second reading will be sometime in October, November, if you guys are following this or tracking this. That completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
It was a pleasure to the board. Like to make a motion, put something on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion by the board for this change in the future land use from County Ag to City Ag? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right. Number six, back through quasi judicial. We'll start with the staff overview. John Paul, you have this one as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Are you doing them all tonight?
No.
Almost. All right. Fire away.
Again, John Paul, Community Development. Recommended motion for this, oh, do we want to read the ordinance title? Oh, do we want to read the ordinance title and we are quasi again? I just want to make that announcement.
Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-65 LDR 25-27, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, provided for rezoning from Elatua County Agricultural A to City of Newberry Agricultural A on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 111 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number 2025-65, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. Um, and, um, John Paul Perez with the Community Development Department, sorry, just doing, cause it's, uh, quasi, uh, it's. Um, the staff's recommended motion is for the Planning and Zoning Board to recommend adoption of the ordinance, granting the rezoning from county act to city act. Um, this is a ministerial process we go through every time we annex a property. This one happens to be large scale, so we pull it out from the group of, um, 15 other parcels that annexed. Well, I think we're down to 13, um, properties that annex, so, um, we'll be more cognizant of your time with the other ones, which are all small scale, um, and have just one presentation on each request. Uh, but for this one, um, we are recommending, uh, this body recommended, uh, adoption of the ordinance. And, oh, there we go.
It won't, it, it won't go back next week, cause the land use has to happen.
Oh, correct. Did I put August 25th? Well, for first reading, yes, we will, um, yeah, we'll have first reading on August 25th, and then once the future land use comes back from state, um, we'll hold a second reading with both of them together. Uh, much like the prior application, these are companions and have to travel together. Um, can't have the zoning without the land use, so, um, this is dependent on the land use being adopted. Um, Patrick M. Post is the owner. Uh, the request is to rezone the property, um, from, uh, county act to City of Newberry Agricultural A. Um, and as mentioned, there is a companion future land use map amendment. Uh, property is 111 acres, uh, parcel numbers provided in the application and, uh, ordinance. This is an aerial of the property. Um, this is, uh, some, uh, the limits of the contiguous property, the same property owner owns and access, um, current zoning district and the proposed zoning district. And, uh, statement on concurrence is generally already there and contemplated in the level of service. Should it intensify or require public hearing, we'll bring it back before the board. And, uh, again, our recommended motion is for this body to recommend adoption of the ordinance, granting the rezoning.
Okay, the applicant is not, the applicant is not here, uh, to present, to cross-examine, uh, so we'll skip down to the members of the decision-making body, asking any questions of the staff through the chair. Seeing none. Uh, is there any public comment after the presentations that I skipped over? If you're feeling like a ping pong, join the club. We're going back and forth here, but, um, very good, we've already been to advisor of decision-making. Uh, of the factual findings, deliberation application. We do not have a motion on the floor at this point.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Passes unanimous. Uh, number seven, variance on a minimum lot size for property in ag zoning district. I'm not sure if there's anything for you to read there or not.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number 2025-31 VAR 25-02, a resolution of the City Commission, serving as the Board of Adjustment of the City of Newberry, Florida, approving a variance as authorized under section 3.2.5 of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations for the reduction of the minimum lot size required to an agricultural A zoning district pursuant to section 4.4.6 of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.6 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass resolution number 2025-31, upon its reading by title only.
And this is going back to the quasi judicial, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and we'll start with the staff overview.
Thank you. For the record, John Paul Perez, Community Development Department. Um, the request before the board is, uh, variance from MSLN Enterprises LLC. They're requesting a reduction of the minimum lot size in agricultural zoning district. The minimum lot size, when you put a dwelling unit on the property, becomes five acres. Um, and this is remarkably similar to, um, Nathan Metz's, uh, situation. So there's a county road down there, um, that had a public taking, um, has reduced the lot size below. Um, and I'll try to move through this pretty quickly since it's a familiar, uh, process for the, for this particular board. Um, so our recommended motion is for, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board recommend the Board of Adjustment adopt the resolution granting the variance. Um, again, the applicant, MSLN Enterprises LLC. Uh, Daniel Shore, um, is the proprietor of this business, um, Shore Builders, um, a local contractor. Um, the proposed variance is to reduce the minimum lot size below five acres uh, due to a tuck, uh, public taking of right-of-way that was outside of his control. Otherwise, he would have the necessary density of one unit per five acres if you would, uh, calculate in the gross, uh, density there, or gross acreage, I should say. Um, so he owns one parcel that is 9.69 acres, um, and he wants to split the property. It's currently zone ag, and here's the, an aerial image of the property, um, on the west side, uh, with north being to the right, uh, is 40, Southwest 46th Avenue. Um, this is a, uh, section map showing that it was a, it's apparent parcels, never been split before, so he's entitled to a one-time split without having to plat the property. Um, he's now coming in for his one-time split. And he's proposing, um, two parcels. This is how, uh, he's designed it to lay out, um, which is generally consistent with the land development regulations. The parcel in the front's gonna be reduced below five acre, cause that's the one that's subject to the taking, and then the rear parcel will be a full of five acres. These are the criteria that staff utilize when looking at, uh, variances to make sure that this is, um, a unique situation and not something that the developer created or the landowner created. Um, and that, uh, we found that to be accurate. Um, and, uh, in the review of it, we also did not find that this would be negatively, um, impactful to surrounding properties, um, or public interest generally. So, uh, we do find the request, um, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations, are recommending, um, a recommendation of adoption of the resolution. Um, and the Board of Adjustment hearing will be on August 25th.
Is there anybody from the applicant here to do a presentation or cross-examine? None of you? Okay. Uh, any public comment? Seeing none, uh, assuming you're gonna lay on your previous presentation. We've been advisors of factual findings and applicable law. Um, no final arguments really at play here. Any, uh, comments, questions through the chair from the board?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the splitting of the property, being, uh, it seems like it's pretty lengthy. So that's what I was gonna question at exactly, is, uh, the one that's the five acres, is that gonna be a, what would you call that?
Access road. Meant for access.
Meant for access, but it's gonna technically belong to the, to the back of the.
That's, the front one can have a different access point, cause it, it touches on State Road 45, or not State Road 45.
Southwest 46th Avenue.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanna get clarity on it, since we're on quasi judicial, what, how that, that's gonna pan out.
So the way that these generally, uh, pan out, there's one, um, driveway, um, coming off the main road, and that, that driveway splits. Um, and so you'll have, um, one curb cut, um, for the driveway, and, uh, one property owner will venture off on their own property, um, opposed to it being an easement, which just simplifies the management of that, uh, roadway and obligations to maintain that roadway.
Okay.
Um, opposed to it being on somebody else's property, and then you, um, you know, you have right to access, but you're limited on what kind of improvements you can do within that easement. This, um, essentially simplifies it for whomever, uh, holds ownership of their rear property in the future. Say they wanted to, um, you know, asphalt it, um, because they had the resources to do so, they wouldn't rely on the permission of the, um, easement, uh, the owner of the land underneath the easement to, to do any improvements to that land. Uh, but that's generally how they, uh, make formation. Elatua County will be the permitting agency that will be issuing the right-of-way permit. Um, and so we imagine, uh, more may come out of that, but generally they do share driveway accesses.
And then the follow-up on that question is, what kind of impact does that? And, and part of me, uh, for not knowing this or forgetting what, what that, this, part of my question, is that easement, how does that impact any kind of buffer between them and the next-door neighbor? Is there like, is in there a certain buffer restriction that they have to be a certain amount of feet of, you know, tree line, shrubbery before it actually hits the next-door neighbor? Like, we, I know we have like a 25-foot buffer, but does that have any impact on that easement?
See, so in agricultural A, um, when we're dealing with more intense uses, um, a neighboring owner may want to put that out, but it's not until we get into our urban, um, districts where we have that, uh, buffering requirement between non-residential and residential uses, which, um, you know, at a horizontal level, don't have homogeneity. Um, they tend to conflict with each other. Bright signs, um, cars, um, trash, uh, areas, et cetera. Um, so there can be, um, you know, there, there are buffering requirements in the code. In ag, um, given that he's going through this variance process, um, leads me to believe that he intends on putting homes on both the properties. And so how those properties are utilized will have to remain within the agricultural, um, limitations of uses of the property. Um, but both will be residences, and whether one neighbor desires a buffer or not, um, it may be the onus of that owner that desires the buffer to provide their own buffer. It's not required by the code.
Any further discussions from the board? Any further public comment? Uh, we still need a motion, I believe.
So, so moved.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor, if there's no further discussions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, that was seven. Eight is still a quasi, the advanced auto parts site and development plan. Uh, Mr. Attorney, I believe you have something to read on this one as well.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is resolution number 2025-37 SDP 25-04, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newberry, Florida, serving as the Board of Adjustment for the City of Newberry, Florida, approving an application for site and development plan of a 6,915-square-foot auto parts store known as Advanced Auto Parts within the Highland Park Plan Development. Pursuant to section 14.12 of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations on lands identified as a portion of Elatua County Tax Parcel Number 01932-000-000, consisting of approximately 1.25 acres, more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, mine and within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass resolution 2025-37, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Staff overview?
Thank you. Uh, for the record, John Paul Perez with the Community Development Department. Um, would you like me to wait on my presentation till member Parker returns, or should I proceed?
She's already gone through the backup with me, so I think she'll be fine if we move forward.
Excellent. Um, so the request before the board tonight is a site and development plan for advanced auto parts within the Highland Park Plan Development. Um, and so it's exciting to see some of that stuff start to come in.
Need verticals.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so staff's recommended motion is for the Planning and Zoning Board to recommend the Board of Adjustment adopt the resolution, granting approval of the site and development plan. Um, and the, uh, site plan proposes, uh, approximately 7,000-square-foot auto parts store. Um, applicant is NV5 Global Incorporated, um, their agent on behalf of Newberry Plaza LLC. Um, Bowler Engineering is the design firm that worked on the, I'm sorry, that's a totally different one. Scratch that. Got a lot of stuff going on right now. Um, the zoning district is planned development. This is the Highland Park, so it's subject to that development order, um, within the framework of a planned development. And, uh, the particular site that they've identified is 1.25 acres. These will be various sizes as they come in, so some, um, lessies or, uh, land purchasers may require larger sites. Some will be smaller, and so you'll see that number fluctuate. There's no fixed number when it comes to commercials, based on what they need, um, to support their business. Um, this shows the location of the site of the advanced auto parts along Newberry Road within the Highland Park PD. And Lot 11 there, this is it in plan view. Um, this is from the construction plans, I believe. And this is the site plan. I'm gonna get a little bit closer here, and I colorize it, so it's a little bit easier to see what's going on on this thing. Uh, but this is generally the, the lease line in red, uh, with the parking lot, building, and, uh, service drive in the rear, or support services, so. In the dark green, we have the roadway buffer, um, that is gonna be handled by the site developer, I understand, or there may be collaboration on that. Um, it's an evolving situation. Um, green is just showing their landscape area, gray is the parking, um, and red is the new building. Um, that blue triangle shows the main entrance to the building, so, um, we went through review, making sure everything satisfied the overlay standards and whatnot. Um, they have their service, um, part-oriented, um, to the rear, to the service drive. Um, and I, I just wanna go back to this image here. You can see there's a pretty substantial. Um, it looks small in plan view, but in reality, it's a huge divide between the residential lots and the service drive there in the rear off of Newberry Road. It's, uh, um, a pretty large, um, distance between like the back of the businesses, which are gonna be front-loaded to the lots anyway. Um, they want that exposure on the street. Um, but, yeah, uh, there's a pretty substantial amount of, of separation going on there. Um, but they have a, uh, pad for loading, um, some, uh, double swing doors, and then their dumpster enclosure. One thing that was missing from the resubmital, uh, we've been kind of trying to get these on an agenda quicker, um, than, um, yeah. Just trying to expedite the process for some of these folks, and, um, we didn't get like a, uh, elevation of the dumpster enclosure, um, but it's gotta be of comparable, uh, material and design to the building. Um, and so it's one of the conditions, there are a few conditions attached to this approval. I'm gonna go over those, and then I'm gonna ask the board for input on one thing that was overlooked in the resubmital, um, in an effort to get this onto an agenda, um, for feedback, all right? Um, and possibly amending the recommended motion to add a board condition, uh, regarding, uh, the, the outstanding item. Um, so these are the materials that they'll be using and the paint colors that'll be going on the building. Um, I did my best to replicate it, um, with a colorized version, but this is as far as I can get with, um, PowerPoint.
We'll put in your review.
If it's as bad as this, then I, I apologize, please. Uh, but this will show kind of the different materials that you'll be seeing there, um, from the face of the building, or at least from State Road 26, um, as well as the signage you'll be seeing. And so that sign does have a raceway. I don't know how the board feels about those. They're not prohibited in our code, but it will have a raceway beneath the channelized letters that provides the electric, so there won't be individually mounted letters, um, just so you're aware of that. Most of our signs are like that anyway. Um, if you're not in the sign biz, you probably are wondering what I'm talking about right now. Uh, this is the south elevation, and this is the one I wanted to engage the board on. Um, in our back-and-forth with comments and review, um, we had asked that no signage be placed on the south facade of the building, which is the facade that faces the, uh, residential. Um, there is a pretty substantial divide between the commercial businesses and the residences, um, and that will be their back, um, of the house that will be facing the back of these businesses. Um, however, most, um, home design puts the bedrooms at the back of the house, and so that means, um, while it may not be, you know, New York City blaring in your window, um, you know, there will be an illuminated sign. Um, again, you can see the raceway here underneath the letter, so, um, it was designed as to be unilluminated. Um, we did have an opportunity to drive the site, and I do appreciate that a lot of traffic will be utilizing that service road to access some of these businesses. Um, this particular site, um, doesn't have a rear access. That rear access is solely for, um, a service road for the trash removal and product delivery. Um, there's no, no person accessing the, um, parking lot from the service road for this particular one. So, um, but there will be businesses that use that as a, um, through access for folks that didn't make the first turn and make the second turn or make the third turn into the property. Um, they'll come in on the access road, and, um, signage there would be helpful. Um, however, it being illuminated might not be desirable for those future neighbors of ours. Um, and so, um, not included in the conditions which I'll go through, um, I do ask if you do make a motion, you contemplate this, uh, whether signage, uh, is desirable by the board or, um, if signage is allowed, that we, um, think about whether that should be illuminated or not, all right? Uh, west elevation, this will be facing the access drive, um, also illuminated signage there and a service door and some of the utility boxes there. Um, this is the east elevation, facing, um, the adjacent developable lot. And, um, going through our findings and conditions, we did. And going through our findings and conditions, we did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations with the following conditions. Dumpster enclosure shall be of comparable design in building materials, that's not extraordinary, that is required by the code. Roof top mechanical equipment will be screened. I provided a recommendation of like louvered screening or comparable. So it also required by the code that that equipment be screened. A maintenance agreement for the shared service road in the rear. One thing that we didn't understand at construction plan review that we are understanding now at site development review is that, and I'll show you with these lot lease lines, they actually extend beyond and into the private road in the back. And so these individual lots own a portion of that road, and like the cross access in the front, as well as a service road in the rear, we just want to make sure maintenance is maintained. And we're asking to see what that looks like in the form of an agreement between all the owners, just to ensure that adequate access is provided to the properties, all right? And site lighting shall be dark sky friendly. And put it here bold, just the ad hoc condition regarding the wall signage on the southern facade, so. That is our recommended motion, and then move forward. It will be heard by the Board of Adjustment on Monday, August 25th, no sooner than 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, John Paul. Is the applicant or any representative here for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Is there any presentation that you all would like to do for any reason? Okay. All right, any public comment at this point? Okay, seeing none. Was there anything of his presentation that you wanted to cross-examine? You were contesting something that he said, for example? No? Okay, all right. Fantastic. Any questions, comments from the board? Ms. Carriera, saw your hand first.
Yes, please. I had a question. Could we just, instead of doing a like, could they have a sign that's painted? I know that may be something custom and then not to their brand, but if we want to do something conducive, because if I remember, and I was hoping that you would have the entire Highland Park, like the one that we've seen online several times where it shows all of the vendors, the possible vendors that are coming in. I was under the impression that the parking lots were going to be behind and be the buffer. So the fact that the parking lots are going to be facing Newbury Road, I'm kind of happy for, for the people who are buying the homes, but I agree with, I hope everyone agrees with me, that lights facing into people's homes, even with blackout curtains, that doesn't seem like that's really nice when you're paying half a million dollars for a home. So maybe perhaps the alternative of a painted sign or a non-illuminated sign that is within their brand image that could follow that, so they can still have their signage on all four walls, but not impact the enjoyment of the people that are living in that community. Is that possible?
I was just going to say, there's already going to be streetlights to the rear, the frontage road, or the, I guess it's the rear access road, there will be dark sky friendly lighting all along that road for safety purposes. So I don't know, maybe they would be amenable to a non-illuminated sign on that side, because our sign code's already pretty generous on giving them three sides plus monument sign location on the main monument sign for the whole neighborhood.
I've seen small, almost like lollipop signs on the backs of properties and layouts that are similar to that. Do you know if that's contemplated by the applicant?
No, not at this time. They did ask for an independent freestanding monument sign along State Road 26.
Off run?
Yeah. And our sign code, I don't know about painted signs. Some places regulate them, and I do not recall off the top of my head if our code regulates painted signs in any way.
Okay.
But because they're in a plan development, our sign code requires that that be on a single sign, a single monument sign, similar to Newbury Town Center.
Yeah, that has all the businesses that are in it.
Opposed to there being, you know, 14 unique monument signs out in front of the property. This does abut a state road as well, and FDOT has adopted a policy called Target Zero, which advocates for reduced visual clutter in the roadway, especially in something like a 50 mile per hour zone, which is property it butts. And so there are opportunities for different types of sign. Once they put a logo on it, it's considered commercial signage and then becomes regulated for the type of sign it is. Given this is a service road and not a public right of way, there might be some leniency with small wayfinding signs for an enter here, or a corporate logo with directional. So that's something that we could work through with the applicant when they come in for a building permit.
Ms. Parker, I think I jumped in front of you. You got a comment?
I have questions about the signage, too. So I mean, whatever decision we make now is for all. They specifically don't, I mean, I guess besides marketing and advertising, a large sign on the back of the building may not be necessary if it's just to find for the dumpster people, like they're going to know their route. So I don't understand why a giant sign is necessary for them to find the building. Now, I think about all the other buildings, are any of them going to be having access from patrons through the back service road? They will.
On next Tuesday, we'll be bringing forward a Wawa site plan, and that has entrances both on the north and south side of the building, as well as parking all around. And so, yeah, there are some businesses that have double access. A lot of them don't. Auto parts stores generally don't. It's a matter of security for them.
Right.
They like to keep the registers away from the windows, and they like to have control over access of the building.
Well, yes, for obvious reasons. Like I said, this is more like, we have to make a decision, and we can't make one for each person, and so it is going to encompass everybody that's in that strip.
Mr. Chair, I would actually say that as long as you contextualize why you're making the decision, you can make different decisions for each lot. This one doesn't have access from the back, so it makes sense to say, in my mind, that you don't need a sign back there because people aren't coming in from back there.
That's exactly where I'm at.
I think all of these lots are going to be unique, so I think the conversation has to be unique for each lot. Now, I think you should also contemplate keeping the direction that you give, or the advice that you give, very, very specific. So if the concern is the illumination, simply say, we make our motion contingent on, we don't believe it should be illuminated. And that gives the applicant the opportunity to work with staff on some various options that might be brought forth. Instead of closing the door completely, be very specific, say, this is what I'm concerned about. And that way, the conversation can continue without, you know, closing a door that we don't know is there yet because we don't know what options are out there if that's the specific concern. So I don't want the board to feel like, whatever decision you have to make tonight, you have to make it up on another night, because they're going to be unique.
Okay, that's, I'm not saying I'm against it completely. I just wanted to clarify, if we make this decision for one, does it need to be across the board?
Hello, Mr. Applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Travis Hasty. I'm with NV5, engineer record on this project. I just wanted to point out that the type of access, so you can see right there on the top left of the page there, left side of the page, it's a directional left, which means you can get a left in and a right out, or I'm sorry, right in and a right out, and then a left if you're coming west on Newbury Road. So there is one access point that's not going to be hit with that, and so there will be people who, like maybe are coming from the signal at Newbury Lane around the back, who would not necessarily know where that store is without that sign potentially. Now, they would likely run along the side of it, the west side of this, they could see it, but it would be, I think, beneficial for that circumstance to have some sort of signage on the rear of the building to let them know. I mean, they might have, again, maybe some smaller wayfinding signs to let them know that the access is along the west side or something like that as well, but that's one consideration on why it might be beneficial to have some signing back there. Again, I haven't really studied the other sites to know if they'll have that same circumstance, but yeah, I think as far as like a non-illuminated, I think it's possible. You know, they could potentially find other ways to light it that are dark sky friendly, that don't have illuminated. I'm not sure if that's outside of the code, but that's, again, sign from the sign standpoint, they might be able to do that.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or staff?
I had a question for staff on, when this came before us, the whole site plan, I'm going to sound like a hippie here, but I was very adamant about foliage, trees, because of all the trees that were knocked down in the area, I asked specifically about, you know, the buffering and whatnot. So for the sake of like the Wawa, for this one and all this, you have commercial in the front, which we love, that's what we want, residential in the back, which is what we want, we agreed on. And then I asked about a buffering around separating the commercial from the residential. Instead of going back and forth with the signs, I'm kind of curious to know, in the site plan in general, what is the site plan showing as far as? Right. Because if you have tree lines, signs could be there all day. I mean, there's a Wawa in where a celebration point is, you have a bunch of apartments there, you have a bunch of businesses, like a Dave and Buster's, all this stuff right there, but they have foliage all around it, kind of like protecting, other than the apartments that are on top of the Dave and Buster's. So I'm just curious to know if there's anything there, because I don't want to hinder one and then have to go repeatedly for each and every single applicant. When we specifically, when this site plan came out, I was pretty adamant about the green space and about planting trees.
So there is both a trail system around the stormwater ponds you see here, as well as scattered landscaping that includes shrubs, understory, and trees. I don't know if it's compact or substantial enough to screen an entire street frontage of signs that have illuminated signs on the back of them, but there is distance that exists there, as well as landscaping. Each site also is landscaped in its own way. A lot of it, a lot of times the trees do end up in the parking lot area, and not necessarily along the rear property line. And so most of the shading and whatnot will be in the vehicular use area, as well as along that roadway buffer on State Road 26. There are opportunities for the homeowners association to also plant additional trees if they would like to do so, but as part of the initial set of plans, it's not a dense vegetated buffer that will exist between the residential and the non-residential uses.
John Paul, since this is one of the first properties that has come through since we did all the overlay districts, can you hit a couple of the high points about the density of the screening that we talked about, the use of different materials on the building, which it looks like all those boxes got checked for us, but it would be a great refresher?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, this current one was, this site plan and this plan development was adopted with the old code. And so just to keep a level of continuity, we've been applying the old code. The roadway buffer here is only 15 feet, the new one in this area is 25 feet. They're meeting the 15 feet, and those landscaping requirements, besides the width of the buffer, really haven't changed very much, so they still need to satisfy the same general standards that CHW, now NV5, had set up for the city.
Right.
All of the design requirements, sometimes it takes a little convincing, but they did an excellent job with applying a variety of treatments to the exterior of the building. The dumpster treatment is already in the old overlay, and it's been carried over to the new. And so I think with the new overlay, what we really got onto was more of the site development and strengthened some of that more intense design that happens on buildings. Certain applicants could advocate for stucco glass and aluminum as being exterior treatments, and that be the minimum treatment that they do to a building, where here they have utilized brickstone, as well as painted stucco. So they've taken it to the next level for Newbury.
I did want to say that I appreciate that, because I think that will look beautiful and be, it'll be appealing to everyone, and it won't stick out like a sore thumb. So I do appreciate, I'm not against the signs, I swear. I do think the illumination, though, so we'll get there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make one point of clarification. So each of these lots has a developer or business that's going to come in and have a landscaping package. Then the developer themselves has a band around the front that also has a landscaping package. So some of these things will happen at different times. So you may see the business landscaping go up, that's not the end. You may see the developers landscaping go up, but there are two sort of standards of landscaping that will all be there eventually, but not all of it is on this one application. Some of it is on the developer.
All right. Are there final arguments to be made, applicant or staff?
I just wanted to add a little bit of context to the map. I don't know where it was exactly. So the distance from the access road, the rear access road, to the back of those lots is, it's several hundred feet, it's probably around 250 at its closest. And then the lots themselves are also 110 feet deep, so, you know, the house won't be positioned all the way at the back. So there's quite a bit of distance there that should help buffer even without the trees, but there are trees also required in the ponds, and there's some existing trees being saved around the ponds where feasible with degrading.
Got you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other deliberations, or would somebody like to make a motion? Can we get the motion back up and what you were?
I'll try. Motion to approve with the condition of a non-illuminated sign in the back to be later approved based on design.
Okay. There a second on that, Ms. Polo? Okay. If there's no further discussion, no further discussion from the public or the board, all those signify, or all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Good. All righty. I think I'm on number nine.
Chairman, can I ask for a bathroom break real quick? Just a quick bathroom break.
Sure, let's have like a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
Excuse me. All right, we were, after a quick break, we are going to reconvene this special meeting in planning and zoning. We are on item number nine, a small-scale land use map amendment, uh, from agricultural to commercial. And Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance number 2025-31 CPA 25-03, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91 as amended relating to a small-scale amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Conference Plan, provided for a change in future land use classification from agricultural to commercial on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.7 acres or, and more particularly described on the attached exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed. 5-31, upon its reading by title only.
Fantastic. So this is the flit, future land use map change. We're going to see the rezoning right after that, which will be under quasi judicial. This is the property right across from the entrance to Newberry Oaks on the south side of Newberry Road. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Paul Perez, City of Newberry, Community Development Department. The request before the board tonight is, thank you, um, a small-scale future land use amendment for a approximately nine-acre parcel along, um, State Road 26. Um, recommended motion is to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the small-scale future land use map amendment. And, uh, this is not a recently annexed property. This has been in the city for quite some time. Um, and they're proposing to go from agriculture to commercial. Uh, first reading will be on, uh, next Monday, August 25th, no sooner than 7:00 PM. The applicant is NV5 Global Incorporated as agent on behalf of Holly Family Holdings, LLC, um, who's the current owner, uh, title owner of the property. Um, small-scale future land use amendment again from agriculture to commercial. There's a companion rezoning application which follows this presentation, an agenda item, um, which is proposing a commercial intensive zoning district. Um, uh, and here's an aerial image of the property, um, showing how it's situated, um, along State Road 26 adjacent to or in proximity to the Highland Park Land Development and across the street from the, um, the Equestrian Center. Yeah. Um, and, uh, sorry, I mess with the orientation of these images sometimes, so it's just easy to show them when they're elongated parcels, um, and dealing with a 16 by nine, uh, display area. Um, we have one house on the property. It's a massive house, um, and it has a, uh, by massive, it's, um, cooled and not cooled. It's around 6,000 square feet. The house individually is about 3,800 square feet cooled, um, or heated, um, depending on the time of year. And, um, yeah, that's generally the existing condition that has a driveway access off of, um, State Road and that I don't believe currently that it has water and sewer, but they are in close by. Um, urbanized or intense development will require connection to those services, so they won't be able to operate on, uh, well and septic. Um, they will have to connect to water and sewer. Uh, here's the current zoning of the property as it, um, is in the corridor, zoomed it out a little bit so you can see the pattern of, uh, land use and zoning. Um, and the proposed land use is commercial. Um, level of service analysis, um, there are sufficient services to serve the property currently. Um, as they come in, we'll look at, um, uh, that again, uh, with the actual development plan. Um, at this time, we're just looking at a broad view. Is there available service in this or available, uh, level of service in the system? And yes, there is currently. Um, we did find the application consistent with the comprehensive plan, land development regulations. And, um, again, the recommended motion is to recommend adoption of the ordinance granting the small-scale future land use map amendment. I'm available for any questions. That does complete my presentation and the applicant is here as well.
Very good. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
I wanted some clarification, um, just, and I, and I mentioned this only because there's been so much issues with the Department of Transportation for, for, from our lovely state with the proposed, um, addition of this to already what's going on with Highland Park, the public's, we don't, we don't even have our satellite yet in that area and we're literally two streets down. Um, I can say that literally for the wintertime and including some recent months right now, including this week, we've had fog delays where exiting this property is, is very t- t- um, dangerous. My concern is with the influx of what's going to happen with Highland Park and possibly this addition. We're going to have so much that it's going to turn even worse than 170 interchange and Newberry Road. So is it possible to make the condition that that's resolved first for the safety of all the community first? Because that, I, I think we're compiling so much and Highland Park's already going to come in in pieces and we don't know the true impact of that. And this is literally one property over.
Absolutely, yeah. Let me defer to the applicant on addressing the, um, fog lighting or the presence of fog, um, and, and access. Um, and then, uh, perhaps to the city attorney, uh, regarding the concept of co- contract zoning or land use, um, in that respect. Um, he may be able to provide more insight than I can, um, on that, uh, but there are certain limitations when boards are considering things with, um, placing obligations on developments, um, and without having an actual development plan.
Can you put the, the, the map back up?
Mr. Mayor.
And before the applicant comes up, I, I know we spoke about this a little bit and, uh, I did want to defer over to the, the manager if he remembers the conversation about the ongoing conversation we have with DOT about the light. Is that what you were going to say? Oh, okay.
We, we're actually talking about a light there. The short answer to your question is no. You can't do that. It's a rock and a hard place. So you, the only way you get FDOT to grant a light is by having the traffic there that warrants a light. If you stop the development that would warrant the light, then you just never get the light. You know, I'm not saying that's a good system. I'm just saying that's the world that we live in. That is the way that it is. I think that, uh, part, the light at Highland Park should be installed by the end of this month, middle of next month, somewhere in there. I think that that's going to help alleviate a little bit, but we are actively working with FDOT because I believe that Newberry Oaks by itself warrants a light. Their studies do not. Uh, and well, well, Newberry doesn't have the ability to move FDOT on those kinds of points. So I think that, uh, our ability to take, if this moves through tonight, take this back to FDOT and say, this is, there's some of the things that are potentially coming, that changes the nature of the conversation. I had an hour-long conversation with FDOT today. It was all about crystal balls and predicting the future.
So, so the activity from the cultural center for the Equestrian Center that has events every weekend with large trucks and trailers is not enough to constitute that?
So by that, almost by that comment, like zoning this as commercial helps get the light potentially.
Well, that's why I want clarification.
And then it will also depend what goes on the property to, which may or may not increase traffic counts and those sorts of things.
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there's a safety issue there even before Highland Park was even put there. Um, so I'm, I'm for, for, I just don't want to make more of a congestion and I was at the meetings from the commission where that was a big concern of some of the commissioners that are currently on the board.
It does feel odd. It does feel odd to create a problem.
But I come from California where everything's backwards. So you, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, I, I want that to be public. There is, there is communication. We're not just going in here saying, hey, approve everything. We recommend everything to the commission to do it and then it's not.
Just one more iteration. Yeah, we all know the traffic backup at 27 and Southwest 15th. There's an 11-point test and Jamie can correct me wrong. There's 11-point tests on FDOT. You have to trip two to three to get them to even come look at the light. We only trip one because that intersection is only a failed intersection at 30 minutes in the morning and 30 minutes in the afternoon. The rest of the day, it's, it's really okay. And so FDOT's saying, no, you know, we're not going to spend 1.5 million when there's a 30-minute, there's an hour-long period spread out over the course of a day. Uh, so to the mayor's point, moving forward this tonight gives me more credence to go back to FDOT and say, okay, again, guys, one more thing we need to look at here and that helps.
Additionally, um, the, one of the benefits of this property when talking to the owners when they were thinking about buying it was it already has a DOT driveway cutout that is very large and they were very happy to have that because now they don't have to go to DOT for access. They already have access. They'll have to upgrade it to commercial clearly, um, but it already has its own cutout. It's ready to go.
Very good. Uh, we do or do not, I don't think we have a motion on the floor yet. Uh, would somebody like to make a motion to change that?
Motion to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, they, they have a presentation on this one. He's just being shy. He's just being shy. Come on down.
Come on, Ryan.
Come on down. Give that out. Give that presentation.
You guys look friendly enough. I shouldn't be shy. You, you're being nice today.
If it was your birthday, we'd sing your birthday too, but.
Oh, I'll have to come back. Um, I do have, uh, good evening, uh, Ryan Thompson with NV5, agent for the applicant, uh, Holly Family Holdings, who I'm joined by, uh, Phil Holly and his daughter Christie and P- uh, Rivera. Just want to, uh, you know, say a, a little bit about, about them. Uh, they've been in our community for decades, instrumental in a lot of the development that's occurred, um, in Alachua, Jonesville and, uh, Barrington is an example of one of their, um, developments. They really do focus on quality versus quantity on their developments and they are here for the long haul. Um, as you can see, uh, Phil is passing it on successfully to the next generation. So, um, hap- happy to have them here, uh, with me. They are the owners of the property. Um, I don't have a whole lot more to say about this application, um, than what's already been discussed. Um, and staff has presented, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have, um, but I think the request is fairly straightforward. It's a commercial land use and, you know, I'll save from having to, to get up here another time for the rezoning since I've been sworn in. Uh, commercial, um, intensive, uh, for the zoning portion, uh, very consistent with the development pattern that's been occurring, uh, along this property. It is directly across from the Weisman Commercial to the north and the Equestrian Center. Um, and it would be great to get a light at that intersection and hopefully, uh, someday, uh, that will occur and hopefully that this project, the land use and zoning in and of itself will, will be one step closer to that. So with that, uh, we have followed the, uh, city's, uh, process for the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning applications. Uh, we are before you this evening. If we're blessed with your favorable recommendation, uh, to the city commission, uh, we'll see them next Monday and then a couple of weeks later for final reading. And I'll skip through most of these. I think we're all familiar with where we are, where it fits within, uh, the context of other developments that are occurring, closer view of the property. And, um, the existing future land use, I did highlight here the Highland Park PD, uh, the commercial portion that we spoke about even on last item. Uh, the zoning, uh, is commercial, uh, uses in the Highland Park. And, uh, we are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We are in compliance with the land development regulations and we are consistent with the city strategic plan as well, um, allowing for, uh, additional commercial and within the urban service area where public services are available. Um, staff has found our application consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan and compliance with land development regulations and recommends approval for both applications. So with that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. We are in deliberations. Are there any further deliberations from the staff?
I did want to express something. I know I motioned to approve it, but I did want to say that I hope that we talk to the person that's smack in the middle, uh, that owns that, uh, agriculture property still that is going to be there and for who knows?
It is actually Ms. Thomas.
I know. I know who owns it, but I, I thought, I hope we're being very kind to her, um, because she is sandwiched now between this construction zone and I don't know what's coming.
But she is selling.
I, if she wasn't though, i- it's because it's being pushed out. It is a pushed out feeling. Um, but I also know that's kind of the place in the way that this town is going. That's the plan to develop in that area. It does make logical sense to be that way. It just, you know, kind of, kind of sucks.
Any further discussion from the public? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, passes unanimous. Number 10 will be quasi judicial rezoning from the agricultural to the commercial on this same property and you have something to read first?
I do. It's an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the rezoning of 9.7 contiguous acre, contiguous acres, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, provided for rezoning from agricultural A zoning district to commercial intensive CI zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.7 acres or more particularly described in exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is to pass. 25-32, LDR 25-08, upon its reading by title only.
Mr. Perez, you can be fairly brief on your overview here, I believe.
Staff recommends this body recommend adoption to the Board of Adjust, or to the City Commission.
Okay, and we just heard the applicant's presentation in the last, uh, item. Uh, is there any public comment? We have three minutes to do so. Seeing none. Uh, assume there's no opportunity, you need to cross-examine anything from before. We're all good there. Okay. Uh, any other further discussions through the chair of the board or from the board? Seeing none. Uh, all right, we have been advised previously of factual findings, uh, and applicable law by the attorney. Uh, if there are no further deliberations, would anybody from the board like to make a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Carey. Uh, if there's no further deliberations from the board and none from the public, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimous. Uh, number 11, we are back to regular order, small-scale future land use map amendment for, from agriculture to commercial on this one as well. Item number 11. This, oh, it's Ms. Hack this time. Fair enough.
I do work here.
I'm about to break.
Yes. What?
You do work here.
Yeah, I know. He's going to head out probably.
Uh, all right. Was there something you needed to read on this one, Mr. Attorney, before we get underway?
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the rezoning of 25.11 contiguous acres, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, provided for rezoning from agricultural A zoning district to commercial automotive CA zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is to pass. Ordinance number 2025-34, LDR 25-12, upon its reading by title only.
That's actually the wrong ordinance. We haven't done the CPA yet.
I have number 4-91.
Number 11 is where we're at.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number nine, 4-91 as amended relating to the small-scale amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan, providing for a change in future land use classification from agricultural to commercial on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, more particularly described in exhibit A, consisting of 25.11 acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed. Ordinance number 2025-33, upon its reading by title only.
All right, so these are two companion, uh, items as well, back to back. This will be the future land use map, uh, change and then we'll hear the rezoning afterwards. And this is on the property in northwest corner of 202nd Street and Newberry Road. Ms. Hack, this, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Uh, we are here this eve-
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. We are here this evening, whoop, too fast, to take a, ooh, goodness gracious, it's on speed dial. Sorry about that. Yes, it is. We are here this evening to take a look at this 25.11-acre parcel, changing the land use from agriculture to commercial. The motion is to recommend the City Commission adopt ordinance 2025-33, amending the future land use classification from agriculture to commercial. And if this is passed this evening, it will be forwarded to the City Commission for the first reading, and will be held next Monday at 7:00 PM. The parcel number is 01922-000-000. Agent is NV5, and the petitioner is IMS 2707, and this is 25 acres roughly located right there at 202 and State Road 26. This, just to make a huge point for this whole project, this whole 25 acres, this is the purple line there is our very eastern edge of our urban services area. So that is where we have said and drawn the line, said we're, no more services passed here. There's the property in the dotted line with the 25.11 acres there as ag, and the proposal is for it to be commercial. To the left, if you can see under the aerial there, that is the, just for reference purposes, that's the Discovery Church, so it's right next to that.
Destiny Church.
Sorry, Destiny. Did I say Discovery? Sorry. Destiny. Discovery or Destiny, whatever, you know. Yes, that's right. You can, you can there. So here's the adjacent land uses for your information as you go around the property, and I can go back, and we can look at those if you need to, but I think you're pretty clear. The only difference really is the south is the Tanglewood neighborhood that's been pre-approved, and county to the east, and, as I said, the church is to the west, and there's county, I think it's county unincorporated to the east also. Also, there's one CI piece down there below, next to Tanglewood as well. So here's the parcel. Sorry for my jagged X that I placed on there, but there's no way to make it really steady, so I'm trying to show you. This is our commercial corridor. This is one of those, Nikki's still, not Nikki back, Nikki Bailey is our mapping person, and this is the map that John Paul referenced earlier. This is our development map, and I've just been starting to cut out of this to show on the presentations the developments surrounding the ones coming in. So the X is the one in question this evening, and you can see below it is that Tanglewood plan development. Skip the church and go over. Crystal Lake was the one you all saw two months or two ago, all the way down to the curve, which you can see here. You want to go ahead and do your presentation now? Okay. Applicant does have a presentation.
Good evening again. Ryan Thompson with NV5, agent for the applicant, representing Holly Family Holdings, who has a contract to purchase the property. So, very similar to the property to the south, but this being at the gateway and the border of the urban service area, but following that same pattern of commercial along that corridor. We chose the commercial automotive after having discussions with city staff, and the predominant commercial that's allowed along that corridor is commercial intensive. And there are some uses that would be appropriate for this site that are only allowed in the commercial automotive, and there are very few sites within the city that can accommodate commercial automotive-type uses. So that's why we're here, is to promote strong and diverse local economy and deliver unique commercial services to the City of Newberry. Again, we followed a very similar schedule and the city requirements for small-scale comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning applications. This is a context area of the site, and 202 being the boundary of the urban service area and adjacent properties to the site. Again, within the context of Newberry's projects map, a little more, the old version of the map, and this is where our site fits in. A close-up of the property, and since we're all familiar, I'm just going to kind of skip through these. There is a communications tower on the 25-acre piece to the north, and then where Tanglewood has an access point, we would align close to that. There would also be access from 202nd Street. If there are multiple users on the property, it would have a common access easement through the property to where you didn't have to get out on 202nd or Newberry Road to go to each one of those properties. The existing future land use is agriculture. Similar to my last presentation, I'll highlight the Crystal Lake, which wasn't represented in the city's land use data since it was approved on July 14th of this year, and then the commercial portion within the Tanglewood PD. Our request, of course, is commercial. Then similar, the CI on Crystal Lake, and looking. Oh, it's going to jump 10 now. There we go. So those are the commercial portions, and they permit CI-type uses, and our request is for commercial automotive. A little, yes, thank you very much. The intent of the commercial automotive is for highly visible, large parcels that have access to high-volume streets, and that's why it's difficult to find a site appropriate for the commercial automotive zoning district. Most of the sites along State Road 26 are commercial intensive, as I mentioned, and the sites that are zoned CA are either already developed or have an odd lot configuration like the one on Doc Corales or less than three acres, which is not suitable for most CA uses. So this is within the gateway overlay. The entire 25 acres are subject to the overlay. The overlay further limits uses. It allows some of the, well, I should back up. The CA zoning districts permitted uses are the same as the CG, which builds on the CI and then has a handful of its own unique permitted uses. So some of those uses, because of the gateway overlay, are then subject to a special exception to be permitted on the site or altogether prohibited. And then some have specific use of those others that remain. They typically have specific use standards within the gateway overlay that impact how, you know, loading can be oriented or others unique to that specific use. The overlay also has design standards for the site, allowing no more or limiting the amount of parking between the building and the street, as well as fencing and screening and signage, building design requirements, and most importantly, is landscaping, tree preservation for champion trees, 100-foot-wide roadway buffer applies to this property, and enhanced landscaping requirements for both the stormwater facilities and the parking lot areas. I did mention that the CA permitted uses build on the CG and CI. This table demonstrates the impacts the overlay has to those CA, those uses that are unique to the CA district. On the first column is those that are permitted by right, and they would have, and the uses listed for the use-specific standards, that is the majority of those, and the ones that are not listed under, should be viewed by staff. I think there's, there is some ability to improve there, having done this deep analysis of the CA district and the gateway. But permitted, other uses are permitted by special exception only, such as automobile sales, and then other uses that are permitted in the CA are actually prohibited because of the gateway overlay district. Again, this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the land development regulations and consistent with the strategic plan. Staff has found both applications to be consistent with the comp plan and LDRs and recommends approval. And with that, I would like to field any questions that you may have.
All right, Ryan. So go back a couple of the slides. So we have the zoning allows certain things, but because of the overlay district, it further restricts some of those things.
That is correct.
There is the permitted by right in the far-left column, and then some of the things that were brought up in my discussions with the, with the board, such as automobile sales, are even further restricted and only allowed by special exception.
Correct.
And then there's some that are just flat-out prohibited.
Correct.
And then the prohibited except for ancillary use. I think we probably leave that one up because that will probably have the most potential discussion. Okay, and that's everything on your presentation?
Yes.
Any questions from the Board of Ryan on behalf of the applicant?
I have concerns about the automotive side of things, and this being the first thing that you see coming into Newberry. I just...
So that's the zoning piece. That's coming up next.
Okay.
Let's do the land use first.
Okay.
I apologize. That's my fault, Mr. Mayor. I did a deep dive on the zoning and...
That's okay. We're kind of killing two birds with one stone to a certain extent.
Yeah.
But yeah, those concerns couldn't be addressed through a special exception. They can be denied. A special exception can be denied.
I'm not really thrilled with the ones that are permitted by right either.
Okay, sounds good.
So clarification, Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want, I want to make sure that I understand the motion correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
So the transition to this district would be what was permitted by right, and we can omit those rights by giving them...
Not on this motion.
That's actually under the zoning. He's just, he went a little step.
Okay.
So it's only going to just commercial, because agriculture, not the specific type of commercial.
Right.
That's what I was getting clarification. I was like, because I thought we were just going right to that commercial effect. Got it.
Okay.
Wait, hold on a second. I'm sorry. We're going from agriculture to commercial automotive?
No.
No. Not on a land use. The land use is...
We're just looking at the land use. For this item.
Right.
We're just looking at the commercial future land use.
The rezoning would be next for going from...
Commercial to commercial automotive.
So we're just on 11?
Yeah.
Which is...
Okay, so ag to commercial. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because the presentation has auto all over it.
And that's kind of mixed up.
And I'm kind of, yeah, it's kind of mixing up.
Yeah, so...
So we're going from ag to commercial. That's a whole different animal than ag to commercial auto.
Yeah. I suspect you'll be a little bit more critical of the next item than the second.
So the commercial part, I'm not too worried about. So that's, 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 that's a no-brainer.
Stacy, can you clarify what the buffer zone is from our Newberry sign to this property? Because I know that we talked about it a couple of weeks ago about how much, I don't know if it's miles or acreage that we were having that was going to be green space coming into Newberry to keep the...
100-foot buffer in front of...
No, no, from the sign.
Three and a half miles from the sign.
It was, I think they called it the term "the greenway." Am I...
Yeah, and basically it's from there all the way out to 170th.
From the city limit sign, not the monument sign? Okay, I misunderstood that.
Well, from 202 in, it's almost three miles. 202 in, out, sorry, to...
There's another three.
To the light, where the church is and the Mitchells. It's like almost three miles.
That's the city limit.
202.
That's what we're clarifying, is that it's the city limit sign, not our city monument sign.
Oh, yeah. That's what I was asking, yes.
Okay. I don't believe we have a motion yet on item number 11.
I could help you with that. I do have a question. So how did DCC manage to get on there and not be listed as commercial? Our church is agriculture.
They're allowed, they're allowed in agriculture.
You learn something every day.
I do, too. Would you, was the pleasure of the board as far as making a motion? Somebody like to make a motion?
For the clarification of ag to commercial, aye, motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Any from the public? See, yes, Mr. Holly. Come on down. Just on ag to commercial.
My name is Phil Holly, and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you regarding this, and my history here with this. I'll just kind of give you a quickie how, why I'm involved here. We, my family started in real estate in 1972, which is probably a bit older than Astoria, but anyway. Started with a Holford family and then got into, you know, doing some development and started, you know, in the Jones area, and I wanted to build my home out in the Jones area, and that's when there was nothing but mobile homes and just a real bad scene. So I put in the first gated community on 241 called Canterbury Farms, and I currently live there now, and my family lives in that area. So my family, since 1986, has developed seven different gated communities in West Gainesville, and take great pride in making, you know, good projects that will long survive us and be kind of the standard. I got involved with the City of Alachua and developed Alachua Town Center and Progress Park up in Alachua. At that time, the Director of Utilities for the City of Alachua was a gentleman named Mike New, and then you guys hired him away from here, I mean, from there and stuff, and so I worked very good with him. And so when he came on board at the City of Newberry, we had seen a number of the projects that we'd done, Alachua Town Center and all the way downtown in Alachua, all the way to I-75, that whole corridor we master-planned and put in 280 acres of commercial residential development. He called me after shortly coming as the new city manager and said, hey, I want you to, there's a lot of things in Newberry to transpire and stuff, and he said, I'd like to do this, you know, get you involved and kind of tell me what I should be doing and not doing and stuff. And I said, I was kind of honored if anybody would ask for my opinion. But anyway, so I met with him briefly, and he said he wanted to see Newberry grow and exceed even what we've seen developed in the City of Alachua. And so he started telling me about where all the zoning was and stuff. And so my immediate reaction to him was said, Mike, you need to take and be sure and protect the corridor on Newberry Road. I said, the worst thing that can happen, and the biggest hurdle we had in Alachua was there were so many little mom-and-pop operations that were along 441 coming from Gainesville into Alachua, and it was very hard to overcome. There was horrible sign ordinance or access planning and everything else. And I said, you need to come up with a master plan that would address all these issues and have a standard that would be, you know, set at very high. And I said, naturally, people are moving from Gainesville, Alachua County, and moving towards Alachua for reasons, but you need to have it to where it's just not chopped up and be willy-nilly and stuff. And he said, well, how do I do that? And I said, well, you need to hire a good planner and stuff. And he said, well, you don't have, he didn't have funds to hire the planner and stuff. And I said, well, you're going to have to have that. And he said, well, you don't know how much it even costs to kind of come with a master plan along this corridor that I feel is the most vital part along coming into the City of Newberry. After some thought, I said, well, maybe I can raise some funds to do that. So I went and met with CHW and said, what would it take to do a master plan along this corridor here that would address people's concerns for many, many years to where we don't have some junk that we have to overcome, bad sign, bad access, bad planning, bad landscaping? And so they got to get, I got together with them. They gave me a proposal for $25,000 to do this plan. So I went, met with people along Newberry Road between Jonesville and there and said, hey, here's a chance that you, as property owner, major property owners, can come and have some input into this as far as what it should look like and what the future, let's plan. There's, right now, it's beautiful. We need to protect that and add value and good growth and stuff. So collectively, I forget how many people it was, we raised $25,000, hired CHW, and they came and developed this corridor that's through there. A lot of... A lot of people asked me, said, what do you own in there? What do you have? And I said, I don't own anything. I've developed three of the four corners in Jonesville, had my hands full with all that. And I said, but I think this is a chance that this could leave kind of a legacy of what could be done if it's thought ahead. I said, you don't want to wind up with looking like 200 in Ocala where it's nothing but just signs and there's horrible traffic or congestion, same thing. And if you go up to Lake City and you come along your major corridors there, it's horrible and stuff. So with all that in mind, you, the good people here, the commission, the leadership that has been here, has adopted this corridor. So my position now, I now have come and bought several pieces of property that I think will be really, really good for me to be able to see what I'd like to see done with my daughter and son-in-law, that we could come and implement some of these really good plans. This issue regarding what kind of zoning category to get, and we'll address that in the actual zoning thing, but we've given a lot of thought on how we could do it and why we're trying to go with CA as opposed to CI. There's a really good reason for that that will tie in with all the plans that you've already got in place. So I wanted to give you that little bit of background. I appreciate you giving me the time to do it and hopefully we can work together. My, my, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the rezoning of 25.11 contiguous acres, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for the rezoning of agricultural A zoning district to commercial automotive, C A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances, providing effective date. Funnel's reading by title only.
Good evening again. Stacy Hectis, Community Development Department. Motion this evening is to recommend the City Commission adopt ordinance 2025-34, amending the official zoning atlas from agriculture to commercial automotive on 25.11 acres. If forwarded to the City Commission, the first reading will be held next Monday, August 25th at 7:00 PM. I read this into the record on the land use. I don't want to labor it and bore you again. Same picture for the ag. This is the request for the commercial automotive. Again, the land use and the zoning table for the surrounding area. The same commercial corridor map. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the commercial automotive zoning district. That's our code section 415 dash, or point one. And the intent is for those commercial automotive category includes one zoning district in the city. This district is intended specifically for intense retail sales and service uses and is automotive oriented. That's where the automotive comes from, which requires a conspicuous and accessible location convenient to street carrying large volumes of traffic. Such activities generally require large land areas, do not cater directly to appreciable degrees to pedestrians, and require ample off-street parking and off-street loading spaces. The district permits specific automotive oriented uses, which are not permitted within the other commercial districts, and this district serves the entire city. So we have in the city what we call pyramid zoning. So if it's allowed in this district, it's allowed in this district, it's allowed in this district, and you keep building. It's like a pyramid. So this district does rely on CI before that and CG before that. So I'm not going to go back and list all the permitted uses that are in CG. I started with CI. It's a little more intense. You'd get a better picture. So I've listed some of those that are permitted uses in CI, which make them automatically permissible with our pyramid zoning in CA. Those are listed here. Some retail commercial outlets for sale of new and used automobiles, motorcycles, service establishments and repair and service garage, motor vehicle, body shop, car wash, truck stops, automotive service stations, public buildings and facilities. This is what's allowed in CA on top of CI. Makes it, makes it a little bit different than the CG. This is the commercial intensive. This also builds on CI, or CG. So we go CG, CI, CA. So here's some of those similar uses. Commercial recreational facilities such as golf courses, miscellaneous uses, express or parcel delivery office, wholesaling and/or warehousing, retail commercial outlets, again, lumber supplies, those such uses. I didn't make as nice a table as Ryan had, though. His is very good. So, and the sixth thing that's, that's allowed, that's permitted by right outside of a site plan, is those sales service vehicles limited to those propelled by electric engine, you know, instead of, they have different limitations and so on and so forth. All the sales and service, so what they did on the sales and service of the vehicles is they added these A, B, C, D, and E as you have to meet those on top of the qualifications for six. So it goes a little bit deeper in requiring it. The other piece is, this is also in the overlay district, which has additional requirements. And like I said and was said earlier, the special exceptions, which is what I wanted to list here, are also special exceptions that we list additionally in the overlay, which I did not put up here. But one of them is the automobile sales. So these special exceptions are allowed via special exception rights in the CI, which is also in CA. I know it's very confusing because it is, you think of it as a pyramid, CG, CI, CA. So those are the listed uses there. That are, sorry, special exception uses. I don't think the applicant needs to do the presentation again unless you want to see it. So what staff has found going through the process with the applicant is that the things that they were talking to us about, that they may want to place on the site, fell within the CA district over the CI district. And that we say that the proposed zoning is contingent upon the adoption of that future land use amendment that you just saw and is a logical extension of the commercial intensities located on the main state road and of the, of the different zonings that have happened on the addition, adjacent part, additional adjacent parcels near them. I also noted that special care will need to be taken as this development moves forward as this is the one, is one of the gateway parcels to the City of Newberry's urban services area, and it is also located in the overlay district, and we'll need to adhere to those guidelines as well. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I haven't even been talking all night. Staff finds a request consistent with the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Regulations of the City of Newberry. So the summarization is that the request from AT Agriculture to, or A Agriculture to CA and that we find it consistent. I think that the applicant wants to speak more to the CA based on some of the questions that you all have raised. If you want to raise any questions prior, I could attempt to address them and then the applicant can come up and address them more specifically based on the development.
Hi. My name is Ryan Thompson. So, and actually to piggyback off Mr. Hawley's comments, I was working with CHW at the time in 2014 when we did the initial corridor study. We came up with three different nodes along the corridor. This would have been the middle node and actually led to conversations and the AgriTech Business Park as a result of that. So I'm very familiar, Mr. Hawley's been instrumental with this corridor from, from, you know, recent times and how this corridor would look and feel. So it's only appropriate that he would be looking to make this a very high quality and marked project for the City of Newberry. So with that, I'll yield and happy to answer any questions.
Can you put up the grid one more time? Because that was kind of most of the questions that I had fielded prior to the meeting with my conversations with the board. And I think some of it has helped with the fact that we can't have a car dealership without a special exception being approved. So that was probably the one thing that I heard. But was the pleasure of the board? What other questions do we have here? I think all the comments that y'all had with me were totally valid, so let's, let's air it out.
Any idea what is going? Like what the plan, what kind of automotive are we talking about?
You're talking about 27 acres, man. That's not a small operation.
It'd be 25 acres. Our initial app, but to your point, Mr. Mayor, if I may, your, our, our initial application was a combination of CI and CA. And speaking with staff, that can be hard to regulate. It can also present challenges to an end user if there needs to be some spillover. We haven't engineered the site. We don't know where stormwater is going. There's a lot of unknowns at this time, so we felt it was cleaner to do CA over the entire property, obviously because the CA also allows for uses in the CI and CG. We were comfortable with that because we don't have to do a CIA, CA use on the entire property. It could be a portion of the property. This just gives us the flexibility to determine what is the best location on the site for that. So it, the, the one real CA use that we would like to see bring to the City of Newberry is a high-end used car dealership. There are two in Gainesville, Turlington, and Southeast Cars. And it'd be nice to have something like that offer an opportunity for residents within the City of Newberry to not have to drive all the way out there. Other than that, you know, I don't think there are any other uses that have been entertained that are in the CA zoning district.
Okay. And the, yeah, I mean, I was on the commission when we started talking about the overlay districts. I think I was the one that was actually talking about the tunneling effect, where we have it wider right there at 202. So we do have that working in our advantage to get that stuff back off the road. It's not going to be right up against the road. It's more intense on the landscaping the further out, correct? So there's additional kind of screening on that, that stuff as well that plays in our favor. But yes, it is the first thing that people see after they get through the green belt.
If you not pay attention to city limit signs, they pay attention to that big Newberry sign, yeah.
Right. So here's, so here's my thing. We're all talking this great, great stuff about protecting our image, protecting the way it looks. Listen, I was born and raised in Miami. I'll tell you right now that every part of town that has a car dealership isn't nice. And perfect example, no offense to our friends in Gainesville, but where Southeast Cars, where the owners are very good friends, that part of town isn't so great. And now, I personally am trying to protect Newberry. I love that I see a nice, beautiful new sign. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the manager for hooking that up. And then I see DCC, nice. We have to your left, as you're coming in, Tanglewood, possibly a hotel at some point, who knows? But to think that the first thing that you're going to see is a possible, even if it's Thomason or Southeast Cars, that is beautiful car dealerships coming into Newberry? I'm sorry, that, that's a tough, that's a tough, tough, tough one for me. Because we are about ag here, even though we don't look like it because of all the houses and all the people are thinking about how we're putting up cookie cutters everywhere. And then all of a sudden, we're going to throw in a CA district within 25 acres and the first thing you see? That's, that's a really tough one. The commercial part, I'm okay with. The automotive? Yeah. I mean, I don't even see a beautiful Tesla Mercedes dealership, high-end vehicle dealership even fitting the perfection that I would ask that you see when you walk into Newberry. That's just, I'm sorry, it's not winning it on me.
And I back that up with, like I said, all of those that are permitted by right, I feel that way about. I don't want to see a heavy machinery and equipment dealership as soon as you come in, you got some giant ag pro building or whatever, a tractor, you know, equipment or what, even a mechanic shop, like none of that. I mean, that's a little better, but it just gives off this, I don't know, I just don't like it.
Do we have some say-so on what it looks like, though? Is that, I mean...
I mean, what to say so on a car dealership? I mean, there's only so much you can...
No, it's car dealerships.
You can paint a pig, put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig.
Still a big lot of a lot of cars.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that there was discussion of putting...
Are we in the deliberation stage?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Are we, are we, are we allowed to argue right now, Mr. Mayor?
Following the rules.
Yeah. I didn't want to break quasi judicial if we're not in the deliberation stage.
We're in the questioning period of the applicant.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Mayor, if I may yield to the applicant.
Sure, sure, sure.
My name is Phil Hawley and we wrestled with this just like you had, okay? Because in the first blush of the things, I, I can see the image that you have of coming in saying, oh, my gosh, we're, we're turning it into exactly what I said we don't want. But let's see the conflict here of what I'm dealing with. You've got an ag community here and you're, you're going after ag people, okay? What do ag people need? Tractors, okay? So you've got, you've got a union with University of Florida. They're going to try to bring all this research. And so you're going to have companies that's going to come along with deep pockets, going to hire a lot of people, and they want to have an image here. You can't do that in CI, okay? So I don't have anybody to, right now, honestly, I have, we have no... in CI, okay? So I don't have anybody to, right now, honestly, I have, we have nobody committed because we wanted to see what would work best for the community. But you've got a conflict. You can't say you're gonna be an ag community and then you're not allowed a tractor dealership. And even on your own ordinance there, it says on the permitted by right, heavy machinery and equipment sales, that's fine. But is it, you gotta go get a special exception to have a Mercedes dealership. Now, does that make sense? It doesn't. So I'm okay if you want CI, but I think you're shooting yourself in the foot because you're, you're not looking at the other opportunities that might come with this CA category. I promise you, I don't have any, anybody that I've sold this to, I'm not that kind of a guy. I'm the kind of guy that takes twenty-five acres, master plans, that looks at the, how we can landscape this. And you look at any project I've ever done, the curb appeal exceeds any others, okay? You look at any of the entrances that I have done on residential, any of the commercial stuff, we exceed all the standards that's there. So you have the opportunity for me to do this and to, and to do that. If you don't want to do that, let's go CI. I can make, I can make it work, but I think you're, you're missing something that's not there. You have no other CA. So you, you can appeal to these ag people to come in here and you don't have anything. So I think it would look really nice. If you looked at some of the John Deere dealerships and stuff of this nature, and you've already taken twenty percent of the property that I have off by saying, "You can't do anything in the first hundred feet." You can't do anything. So how many people, whenever you, if you buy a house and you've got, you've got your yard and stuff, and they say, "If you can't do anything in your front, twenty percent of your yard," that's a huge giveaway. Okay, that's your rules? I'll live by your rules. But I think you're, you're, you're backing yourself into a corner that you don't want. And I'm like you, I don't want Miami. I don't want, I, I don't want Lake City. I don't want Oakdale. And I think you have in place the mechanism whereby we can take and have the overlay district with your landscaping and traffic management, because this is twenty-five acres. You're not gonna get one user that's there. You're gonna have to master plan how people are gonna access out and how they're gonna get in, how they're gonna get out, and where your tire lanes are. And so you've got a great opportunity to do this, cause you can, you can go with CI and get something crappy, or you can go with me and get something that you'll be proud of and say, "Yeah, we participated." Cause my record stands that I've, what I've done. Now, I understand the concern that you have, of what if I drop dead? Well, you got my daughter and son-in-law that you can, they'll make the same commitment. But what if they drop dead? I still think you'll be in a position with your, your overlay districts and all the stuff that you have that you're pretty well protected on it. Because this fits, if you look at your ordinance, it says high-traffic areas, and then you're not wanting to have people to be able to have their business in these areas that have high traffic, which Newberry does. Uh, you have good answer. Correct any questions in my head?
Ms. Carrie, go ahead.
Uh, I, I don't have a question for you. It's just my comment I was holding. So I know the Tanglewood property across the way was approved. What, um, commercial properties have been presented for that already?
There hasn't been anything presented over there yet.
And we don't have an estimated date for that start, correct?
Correct.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, cause I love doing that, all right?
Sure.
So, um, obviously the intersection with two oh two, that's the main start. It is the entry. Um, I can tell you what happened in my community that did an auto mall. And I lived in, in that community, sir. Um, so respectfully, I absolutely love what you've done with, with Canterbury. I researched it when we were looking to move to this beautiful, um, part of Florida. But I will tell you that the property values went down, the crime went up, and as things changed over twenty years, that, that auto mall was the worst part of that area. The one part that I wanted to contribute is to not allow Newberry to make the same mistakes as my small community in California did, to keep what's best about it. With the ag park being built very shortly, um, I see the need, I agree with you. If it was a John Deere and Brock Purdy from my Niners was gonna be coming and, and being on there, I, I would be the biggest fan for you guys, cause I truly believe it was true ag. But when it's presented as a used car dealership-
Uh, well, that's-
I'm just, I'm just being honest with you. That's the absolute worst case. You're asking for the, the slums entry. And we're, there are, there's already perceptions of what Newberry is. Whatever that gateway, that is the, the last parts of when commercial comes into Newberry is gonna be the front-facing of our, we, we need to have the best of the best. We're, we're the ones that are gonna be bringing revenue to the county. We're gonna be wanting to change the face. We are at the forefront of so much. So I hate to say that that piece of property is very, very, very important, because everyone is, tends to be right-handed and look that way. But it's also next to a church. And, um, something ain't right about, to me, about having a car dealership or even a tractor dealership next to a church. I've parked on that land from when I've gone to the Easter egg hunt. So I hate to see like some of the most amazing things change because for the sake of progression. I was fine with, with the CI going on the other side, cause it's on the other side of the church. Um, but I think there could be something else there, other than an auto. That's just my two cents.
And wanting, wanting to keep with what my whole philosophy in life of living is that if I can't help you, I will not hurt you. And in this case, I will withdraw anything about the C, CA and just say, "It's the CI. I think you're making a mistake, but I will do that." So it, thus, for the sake of unity and the sake of planning, I just ask you, when I come back and try to do something, that if you give me as much help as you can, for I'll be trying to bring some businesses here that's gonna tie in with the master plan of what you have and stuff. And so let's drop the, let's drop the CA, okay? Is that fair enough?
Uh, Dated City Manager wants to say something. Go ahead.
Uh, Board, go first.
Go ahead.
We're-
I see you reaching for the mic, so I'll-
I don't have a question.
Oh, your mic.
I got, thank you. I don't have a question. I have comments for discussion. So I'll hold my, I'll hold my piece until then.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I think we've all made very great points on both sides. Um, I think Mr. Hawley has a spectacular track record. I don't think we disagree about that. One, one point I did, I mean, the fact that we have potentially Dag Tech Park going there, the tractor stuff actually would fit a little bit more. And not that it would, but if it was, if we ended up having to face it closer to town, it's even gonna be further up on the, up on the road. Uh, and I just, just putting that out there. But as far as changing something on the fly, um, I know, at least in the commission, we were always kind of hesitant about doing that. And I'm not sure that we can specifically even do that here tonight, but, uh, one of you speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, I, I was just gonna make that very point. Uh, I think that the, what staff was hoping for, what the commission's been asking for is John Deere, Tractor Supply, those kinds of things that kind of tie in. So a, a car dealership has to be done by special exception. You guys have the opportunity to say no to a car dealership. So you get another bite at that apple. If you leave the CA and this developer's able to go out and attract Fergie Mas, uh, Mas, Massey Ferguson, right? Uh, you know, tho, those kinds of dealership. I think that is what, the, holding on to that heritage of ag, I think doing that in a nice way. Uh, and I, I do think that Mr. Hawley's record stands for itself in terms of whatever he builds, it is going to be nice. So if there's any, if there is a person to take a risk on that, I don't even think it's a risk at this point. I think you can go around and you can look at every single thing that he's done, and it is done really, really well. So the, the, the one thing that the board seems fairly amped on car dealership has to come back, right? Has to come back. So you guys can say no if your objection is, is strictly on a dealership. And I think it's probably the word used also that came in there, right? Then you got, you got the opportunity to say no. If you say no to this, then, and we can land, you know, one of those people, one of those entities, then we've shut the door to that. And so that's, that's why staff worked this advocate to make that recommendation, was to potentially keep that open. Again, if you say no now, you, you close the door to the used car dealership, which you already have another opportunity to close that door on. You don't have to, that's not by right, but you're also closing the door to the other thing, which the commission has said, "That would be something we would love to see there."
So here's the thing.
And we are the-
I have feedback on that, too.
I have, I have some serious feedback on that.
If you would have asked me for the other property we discussed that you guys own, to make that a commercial automotive, I'd say absolutely, a hundred percent, that is the perfect spot for that. When you talk about the other spot by the sign, I don't agree. I think that a tractor supply or something is perfect for this area. I just worry about that location being the spot to put it.
But with a tractor supply, you'd have got tractors, farm implements, and all that stuff setting outside, which are uglier than a Mercedes.
So, okay, so, so I'm just gonna say this here. We are picking the wrong spots for these items, to Melina's point, and that's my point as well. I do not want my citizens to drive into New, I want our citizens to be prideful of where they live. So when they walk in, they see a beautiful sign, beautiful. They see a beautiful church, beautiful. Not, I'm not doubting you. I, I, I do, I do agree with everybody else that your stuff and your product is beyond amazing.
Your work is beautiful.
Okay? No one's doubting that. However, even if it was a John Deere and you made it as beautiful as it is, it's the first thing you see when you come into Newberry. I do not want to see, uh, any kind of automotive when you walk into Newberry. I do agree with the commission. I, I, I do see ninety percent of the time eye to eye with our commission. However, in this part, I think you're picking the wrong spot and asking for it to go in the wrong spot. Again, to Melina's point, if this was the original spot that was on the agenda, heck, if this was Pat Post's property, that is just, you know, just slightly west of us, of, uh, US twenty-seven, okay, we can, I'm all for bringing an ag dealership here. However, as it's being the first item you see when you walk into Newberry, I am sorry, guys. Um, I, I, I can't, I can't get on top of that. I, I just can't.
Um, Ms. Carrie, go ahead.
So if I'm correct, sir, the property across from Newberry Oaks from the actual agricultural equestering center is owned by your family, too, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So why didn't you ask for that zoning?
Uh, there's very little frontage.
Ah, okay. But with all of the, the signage, you could, you could come to us and say, "Hey, how do we direct?" Literally, the amount of people coming out that actually uses ag right across from the ag center-
Right.
-that is the most logical. It's gonna be a light. There's gonna be people stopping that even if you don't have more than a couple of tractors there, they're gonna know that that's where you go get it. I would be the first person, I live in that community across the way. I would be the person to actually say, "Let's do it. Let's pick something better." And, and, and then we'll support you, whatever you want to do commercially and the other thing to support. Let's make this to where your legacy, sir, and your legacy for this community stands beyond what you've done for, for Jonesville. Your family would be absolutely proud. We would be proud with that choice. Cause the reality of it is, is I think we need something like that. I said it, like, it's not just because I'm a Brock Purdy fan either. I, I honestly believe we need those kind of equipments. I would even be supportive of it on two thirty-five or four forty-one. There's, like, pick a spot. That, that, that's where we can do it. And let's, let's make it happen. I love it right across the way.
At the end of the day, I want you to understand, at least from me, this is not on you and, and your family's legacy. What ends up happening here that I see is my children and my children's children, that at some point, when the keys have been turned over and that John Deere that you beautifully made and it looks great, all of a sudden the keys get handed to somebody else and they let it run down, then my grandchildren are coming into a city that it's like, "Why did this happen? How did this happen?" So that's why it's like protecting the outer bands of Newberry is so important. Because I trust your children, but at some point, if it does sell and turn hands to somebody else, now they have that ability to be like, "Hey, you know what? I don't need to upkeep this." So that's, that's the fear that I'm having.
Well, we don't, uh, so let me-
I don't think we have a disagreement. I, I, I think, I, I disagree with your assessment of it, because I don't think you've seen how it can be done right, okay? And I can give you credit, cause I, you, you can see, just on anything that you put there, it can always fall in the hands of the wrong party.
Right.
On anything.
Yeah.
So, but on this case, I'm saying, "Okay, I'm your neighbor. I'm here. I live here. I'm, kids, everything." So-
I know you want to hear of it.
So, but as far as zoning, so I'm not, we're not in dispute. We're not arguing here right now. I have said, "Give me CI one and we're going down the road and I'll do the best that I can."
Let's, well, let's do this. I don't think we want to necessarily do changing applications on the fly, uh, but we've, we've all kind of vetted this out a little bit. Why don't we just give our time to digest on it a little bit and then you can talk with them. Uh, Ms. Christie wants to talk.
Yeah. Christie, Holly Rivero. Um, just want to explain from our perspective what it's like being us a little bit, just not to get sympathy or not, like you said, we can re, reapply or whatever you would require of us. But when we buy property and this piece came, we actually tried to buy it before the guy that bought it bought it. So we've had our eye on this piece for a very long time, simply because it is absolutely the corridor to, to everything. And we eat out here, we live in Jonesville, but we, this is very much our community as well. Our friends live out here. Um, so when we go to, we have people that come to us, we, we're in commercial real estate, you know, Tractor Supplies, um, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, I can name you, we're in the business. So we have lots of different people. And what we do is we found this piece and we've been in contact. It started back with Mike New, you know, to bring the city something that is important to the city. And so the challenges that we face, and then we have to try to find a buyer for something. So when we go to, let's just say, I, I don't even know, a Costco, for example, or somebody Walmart, whether that's a good or bad thing, whomever the, the end user might be, we say, "We have a beautiful piece. This is something you would be interested in." We can't even get them to site visit until we have zoning and land use in place. So it's tricky for us, because we want to bring quality projects and quality development and quality tenants or, or buyers to the city. But when we have a piece, we can't bring them until we get these things in place. So we have to give it our best guess, if you will, to, to put our feelers out. But then we also have the challenge to, um, talk with the city and talk with, and we've had, how many meetings now? Eight, probably, on this piece. And so then, and we've presented, and we spent a whole lot of money with NV5 to present what we felt like is, one, what we can sell, two, what is best for the community, and three, what we have, um, received from staff as what they would like to see. And so it's disheartening a little bit to us. It's a little bit of wind out of our sails to come to you and to have such a visual reaction when we've, not only, we don't have any tenants. Like I said, we don't have any buyers right now, because this has been such a, such a gray area of us knowing. And we can't commit to them and we can't commit to you that we can bring them, but we can't. So we're in a little bit of a no-mans land in the meantime. It's, the clock is ticking on our commitment financially and our, and our, you know, trying to make all of this happen in an expeditious way. Um, and so we've met with them many times and we discussed many different options and many different possibilities. And so this zoning wasn't, you know, realistically, we don't even know that we would bring any of those users here, but it's the higher zoning that if we could bring somebody like that, that could be a benefit, that we would have that flex, flexibility to do that, rather than to come back to you again and to say, "Oh, we have this or we have that." So used car salesman or new car sales or whatever, I'm with you. That's not our target, just being completely transparent. So we don't really know what our target is, because we're getting a different signal from you and from staff and from the old, you know, people that worked in Newberry. And then we have friends here as well, and then us as residents, what we want to see, all while what's fiscally gonna, we do this to make a living. Um, and so to put all of those pieces together, so, um, that's, I think, maybe a little bit of his frustration is that we've come, you know, you're safest with us to, to make this happen, but we ourselves are gonna, you know, even if we sell property or whatever, we're gonna further restrict architecturally, we're gonna further restrict landscaping, you know, some of the issues that you had earlier with the sign and the backlighting and all that. That's not gonna be an issue for this site. We are gonna bring in what we feel architecturally is the best, highest for that corridor to match the sign. We're gonna bring in, and anybody that we sell to, be it a Tesla dealership or a Tractor Supply or a NACE Hardware or a Costco or anything, and put them through the most rigorous. And you've probably seen it in little communities around, that there's stone or whatever, that we can come up with an architect to create architectural guidelines far, way farther. So if we die or whatever the case might be, that that is gonna protect this, this corridor visually. And so really, I think almost the uses are almost secondary and that we couldn't, if it's a, whether it's a car lot or whether it's a tractor lot, you can't even put a bunch of- whether it's a car lot or whether it's a tractor lot, you can't even put a bunch of tractors out front. You know, if you look at the overlay, we have a hundred feet that we can't put anything in but trees, a monument sign and landscaping. And then we have to have the building and then any parking display, we've talked with John Paul, it has to be around the back of the building. You might have a tractor or two tractors, but it's against your own ordinances to have that happen, so we could, you know, maybe you've seen it driving and, you know, Thomasville, Georgia, whatever, they put mounds up and they put a tractor out, but the inventory goes in the back. So you're not gonna drive down State Road twenty six and see eighty seven tractors, even cars. Even if it's a Mercedes, you can't, you know, the, the guidelines. And so I think before you say, oh, heavens no, I think you have to look at your own rules that you would make us go through or if we sold it, to make the next person go through. And to say, we can't have, you know, the hundred feet, we're gonna put fencing up, but all of that has to be buffered from that visual, from the vision, from the road, am I wrong? Because we talked about doing cars and John Paul's like, we can't do that. So we might could put an awning and put two or three cars out front facing State Road twenty six, which eighteen hundred linear feet of a state road with a grassy median and at a, at two hundred and second street, which will be a lighted, a lighted area. There's no better place for something like that to meet the needs of the community. But that's my two cents and before you say no or think it's gonna be a used car lot, which again is by special exception. So even if it is a John Deere facility, they can't display a bunch of tractors by your own code. The, the, the inventory has to be behind the building. So just take that into consideration and just try to, you know, see it from our perspective and that we love the community. We're, I raised my kids here, he raised me here, you know, we're three generations of Alachua County family. My grandkids will be raised here, you know, we're not going anywhere and this is not something that we wanna drive by and be like, yes, we put that, you know, auto, auto, uh, you know, that auto project right there. We live up and down these roads and that's not something we would ever want, nor would we ever sell to anybody that would. If we ever sold this, we would say, here's the overlay of our overlay of architectural guidelines so that we don't have to look at something ugly in, in the future. So take that into consideration, if you don't mind, with the, with the C, you know, the, the automotive zoning to say that even if you approve it, look at your own regulations that are now in place and Stacy can speak to that. To know that we can't put a hundred cars or a hundred tractors or a hundred anything out in front that we want, that we want to present on such a way. So, but I do think that there is a need for those things. And unfortunately, I would love to have every single piece up and down State Road twenty six and master plan it ourselves and, you know, do it that way, but this is what is presented to us and there is a need for that. And so we're trying to put all of that together to do something that we would be proud of that would also benefit, so.
So we have the opportunity, uh, we don't have a motion on the board or on the floor. Uh, we can kind of hit the pause button, not that it would necessarily change anything, but it would give them the opportunity to change the zoning application if they want. Uh, we are just an advisory board here, so whatever we say is just kind of feedback for the commission. So.
Mr. Chair.
With that.
I do have a suggestion, but I think Board Member Polo's been waiting very patiently to get her comments in. We, we do have more public, but I, but she has been waiting very patiently. Yeah, yeah, I've, I've seen it, you know, but I do have a potential suggestion to the board after those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I think that my subtitles were on my face. I don't think that short of a, a rainbow making factory, there's gonna be any, anything that anybody necessarily wants to see right there. We love our green space right there, right? This, to me, we've got a trusted, a trusted track record of fantastic projects with good look that we have some, some say so over. There's going to be something leading into town. Why not, why not put that in the hands of people who have shown their capability and their commitment? Is my only thing, like, no, nobody wants to see, you know, a thousand used cars, but to your point, based on our rules, all of that stuff is, is kind of tucked back behind. And I don't wanna see us shooting ourself in the foot for the future because as that expands further down and that ag park takes shape, there's gonna be something right there. I mean, why not start four hundred feet back? I was, I had a lot more, but I lost it all.
Oh, sir.
Mr. Chair, there might be other public here that.
Ma'am, did you have something that you were here for in particular? Yeah. Oh, okay, all right, okay, fair enough.
Mr. Chair, I, I just, I wanted to say, just for context, staff is gonna bring things like this to you because this is the direction that this board, uh, maybe not this particular board, board members change, some board members are eternal. But when we talked about this overlay district, we talked about things that were larger, needed more space, pushed out, and then we talked about that tunneling effect. So staff probably isn't gonna bring to you a tractor dealer supply on the other ten acres cause that's specifically not the direction that the PNZ or the commission has given uh up until this point. Now, if that direction changes, then staff will change the advice, but that's not the direction that staff's been given. So staff worked with this applicant to fulfill what we have heard from this board. Uh, and I understand that it's difficult because the overlay district was six, seven years ago. And then, you know, there's things that just pause, so we lose track of that. But consistency is important so that staff knows what to bring forward that will get benefit. Um, I think that the solution here is, to the mayor's point, this is an advisory board. I think the motion could be, the PNZ advises CI. Uh, but, you know, we'll put it in front of the commission to let them make that choice, whether it's CI or whether it's CA. But that would allow them to move forward with your, looks like three, one vote, that we prefer CI instead of CA. But I agree with Board Member Polo, I think, um, at the end of the day, uh, we're blessed to have a developer with a good track record, uh, that uh, has the potential to do something really nice there. And I think that's the, the glass half full optimism.
I can ask you a question. What would you see going? No, Holly, again, what would you see going there? Okay.
You want my ideal of what I could absolutely pick a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Nothing. A park, a green space, something um, that ties in with the church, a small.
A private school.
A small community school attached from the church in that, but I know that the church is limited and they might not be able to buy that piece of property because it's expensive.
Church is interested in part of the property, so we're, we're looking to see what we can do with whomever, cause they need more space.
Church wants to do automobile sales?
No, sir, I said they was interested in part of the property.
Sorry, I had to ask, I was like, I didn't like.
Yeah, they, they express, so in the real world, though, you, you're, you're coming into a city, you got the opportunity to do something special here with good planning. I've invested, the commissioners have invested and for years to get it. You have water and sewer that's brought out there and, and the only reason that came into being was because of the actual application for us to go and do this corridor that you could present to the state to get some of the grant money you got. So the state money, and everybody's under the impression that this is gonna be commercial and it's there. I agree with you, I would like the whole world to have nothing on except me in the middle of it. But that's not the real world.
Well, you said ideal.
Realistic ideal, so.
Uh, Chairman, my, my response.
Go ahead.
Um, in respect of what we need in this community.
Yes.
We have twelve thousand five hundred homes gonna be built in the next fifty years. We need to land for schools. We have three schools that are already overpopulated and with the increase that's gonna be happening, I know that there's some plans for, you know, here or there, but right now, all of our kids are going to one part of town. So if we could spread out the schools, and if that's a Christian school, great, if that's a public school, great. You, that, that, that would be my ideal.
But you, but you think of the school, would you want your school on a road that has forty thousand cars going by today to create the traffic and them directly coming out?
We already have a school, that's the middle school that happens to have all that traffic on US twenty seven, man.
One at a time. One at a time, please.
I'm just saying that, like, if you really wanna build some, whether it's a high school, I'm not talking about putting an elementary school there.
I would sell it to, I would sell it to Alachua County School Board in a heartbeat. If you wanna bring them to me, I'll be happy to.
I absolutely know that the Alachua County School Board won't do anything for the west side of this county. So I, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about for the future of this community and, and actual population. So I'm just, I, I would say, like, my question was, if we voted on this, Mr. Manager, the permitted by right, they never have to come back, correct?
Site plan review, they have to come back, there, there's.
No matter what, if it's, if it's permitted by right or not.
There, there, and, and part of the learning curve of being, there's always, we've kind of paced all of these processes out and it's been eternal that every board member wants to jump to the last step, you know? But it's future land use, it's zoning, it's site review, I mean, there's painstaking numbers of steps that, that come through.
So my question for you is, if they come back and they say they want a truck stop there, I'm just gonna be double advocate. If it goes into quasi, we have to base it on whatever reports, we can't use our personal feelings of what we wanna see there. Right? This is the only time before the zoning for the advisory board to actually give piece meat to the commission to say something. Is that accurate?
I don't think that that's accurate. The way you, the way you ended that, I think that went off the rails of being accurate. I think that the number of stops that the overlay district have put on, that the zoning have put on, that, that is going to naturally limit a lot of the concerns and fears that you guys have been expressing very eloquently tonight. Um, which is exactly why the commission put all of those stops on there, to make it way too expensive for a truck stop, to make it way too onerous for a truck stop, those kinds of things, right? So the, the processes that this commission has spent the last decade creating to prevent that will come into effect to prevent that. And it will, it gives these boards, you guys, the commission, the ability to mold even the things that you don't think that you want to see or you don't think can be done well. It gives you so many bites at the apple to force and compel it to be done well, which again, was the intention.
I have a question. So currently, right now, it is just commercial, not commercial intensive, not commercial automotive. It is just plain commercial, correct?
The land use that you just approved.
So do we have to make it a CG, a CI, a CA? We have to make one of them?
Yes, that's the next step.
You gotta pick, which, and Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say a head nod, I thought it was a pretty good suggestion, like, we can say, hey, three to one, we, we think that CI is better than CA, but ultimately, and that's our advice, right? Make it CI, not CA, but commission, uh, this is, you said you want to be able to see some of these kinds of things. This is the zoning we recognize that you've said publicly, you voted on that you want. You don't want those kinds of things in the urban core, you want those things in the outer band of the urban service area. And I think you have your green space, it's right on the other side of two oh two. That's why we created the urban surface area, so that that would be green space on the other side. We are specifically saying inside two oh two, that's where we're running water and sewer. That's where we see these activities, outside two oh two, line in the sand. Again, that's back to one of those processes that this board voted on, gave advice on, commission voted on, sent to the state.
So we've gone through quite a bit, obviously. Um, let's try to land this plane. Uh, what is, uh, what would you, what would you like to do? If we put a motion on the, if we do put a motion on the floor, making the motion or seconding doesn't say you're supporting it. You are landing the plane and we take a vote and if it's one to three, then that's the vote. That's the advice that we send up to the commission, uh, who can take the advice, not take the advice. They can fur- further deliberate about the advice as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, can we put, and I'm, I was researching in my land development code and I'm not having any luck, but could we put Stacy on the, on the line for a second and maybe she can do this, maybe not, but. You know, we talk about uses by right and how little discretion we have. But we have a very different situation here. When you have uses by right or special exceptions, which have even greater discretion on this board. But in this instance, we've got, in the overlay district, we've got more, more handle and discretion because of the overlay district. So we, we, in the site plan approval process, which again can be kind of pro forma, but in this instance, we have greater input, I think, on this board and at the city commission level, which is, I think, where this board is really struggling because we hear all the time, uses by right and you have such little discretion. And I think if Stacy can speak to that, and am I making sense, Stacy? Can you speak to that in this particular area, how? Let's say at, at this level or at city commission, vote to go with CA. Okay, what, what does the developer have to do then to go to the next step? I, I think that would be helpful for our board.
Yes, so uh, planning one oh one, permitted by right means it's in the zoning district, you're allowed to have it. Um, the only thing that we require is that you come back for our site and development plan. All commercial developments in every zoning category are required to come back for a site and development plan. That's when you can make sure that they've met all the requirements of the overlay district. Keeping in mind that just a few months ago, you all voted to make the overlay district even stronger than it was from the previous one, uh, from about six or eight years before. So it's now even stronger than it was then. We've got a lot more architectural standards in it, we've got a lot more setbacks, buffers, requirements. So going back to the permitted by right, you get it by right of the code, what the code says you can do in that zoning district. We require you still, as commercial, to come back always for that site and development plan. Uh, some uses require special use permits, like the one you just saw earlier tonight. That type of concrete batch plant requires a special use permit that gets pushed to the environmental level and things like that. Um, rights, uh, accessory uses to those permitted uses, we have lists of those. Then you have special exception rights, those mean, yes, we like the zoning district that you're in, but you have to come and get a special exception approval to do that use in that zoning district. And that requires additional um, staff review, it requires potentially outside review. Um, those are the ones that come to you that have much more detailed um, requirements, uh, such as we have required that automobile sales is a special exception through the overlay district piece on CA. In the overlay, just in the overlay in general, so it doesn't matter where they are, they could be on the nine acres, they could be on this one, regardless, the overlay requires that use to be a special exception. Then we have prohibited, so those mean, those, those, they can't even come forward, we, we will meet with the people, we'll tell them that they're prohibited and they just can't even come forward. So those are our four areas of, or five, if you count the special use permit on things that are intense industrial. Those are the layers um, of the approval processes. No matter what, all commercial is required to have a site and development plan that comes through and you get a stab at that apple again when they come through. Scott, is that kind of what you were talking about?
Unfortunately, it hasn't been codified yet. So it takes a while for it to upload to municipal code.
So we can, we haven't taken a motion. I believe we can actually just not make a motion and just send our comments to the commission. Uh, but, I mean, they both would have the same effect.
I just had a few more comments, I'm sorry, I know it's late and everybody wants to go home. For me, I came from Gainesville and I moved away because I hated what it had turned into. And I'm not saying Newberry is doing that, they're much better at planning and making sure it makes sense. Um, and I think our board is part of that, of being very logical about it as much as possible and putting those feelings aside. It is hard for me every single time to choose from agriculture to commercial. On your first one, it made sense for me and it was still hard. I didn't wanna do it. Um, I hear the residents talking about being pushed out or all these things, but this is what happens when a city grows and it is unfortunate and I know not everyone understands. We are put with a lot of pressure, this board has um, built things, the comprehensive plan, we've been a part of that, like, big, big things for this city are put on our shoulders, so. So that is why we are so nitpicky and specific about what we see and where we want things to go. So I hope you guys, I think you do wonderful work. It really isn't that. It is just trying to ensure that we really are making the best decision for this town and all of it to go. That's a lot of pressure on somebody who's just a regular resident on a day to day. So it's a hard pill to swallow, all of it. So I just wanted to express that.
Are we to the point where we want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to object. I don't think anyone would call Board Member Parker, just a regular resident. She sits on every single board out there, so.
Ms. Polo, would you like to make a motion at least, who's, or in favor? If we make a second, somebody makes a second, we can at least take a vote. If it doesn't get a second, then it fails for lack of a second as well, and we're kind of at baseline anyway. And that would potentially just get reported to the commission, unless the applicant feels like they want to go back and regroup and come back to the board, but it's completely up to you.
Prior to making my motion, I would like to say that I agree with Board Member Parker on the fact that making these changes is difficult. It's a lot of pressure. But the changes are being made. We're already growing. We're already at this point. How can we do it with the best intentions for our residents, other than to go with people who have a proven track record, who would feel like, yes, maybe it's naive, but we still have to trust people, right? We have to trust them to make the right decisions, just like we are trusted to make the right decisions. So based on that, and based on the fact that our incredibly valuable staff has deemed this a worthy usage, and in the best interest of, of our, all of the, all of the hard work that we've all put in, then I would like to say that I move to approve. Thank you. I motioned to, I'm sorry?
The recommendation.
I motioned to for the recommendation to CA.
I also want to, because I value you guys so much, I think you are potentially the best people to make this decision, moving forward, what goes on, on that property, because we have them now, and we have you guys now, also, and we have the commission that we have now. In two years or three years, it could all, it could all change, and it could all be a crapshoot at that, at that point as well, but. So we have a second, or we have a motion. Does anybody want to make a second?
Out of respect for our team and our staff here, I will second it so that we can make a vote and decide.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean I fully agree. I really appreciate everything the Holly family is saying, but.
Sure, sure. Assuming there's no more deliberations, we'll go ahead, and I'll just do a roll call vote. Ms. Carey, aye or?
I know, no, I mean, I'm gonna say aye, just because.
Understood. Ms. Willow?
Aye.
Ms. Parker?
I am super torn right now.
Could end up, could end up, could end up, could end up as a tie.
It's not anyone's fault. I really am just torn on the decision. Like, I feel like I need more time to think about it and process, and then look at all of the options that are for commercial intensive, and what are the other things that could end up there? That's why I just personally need more time on processing on what else is the option.
A motion to table trumps the motion that's on the floor, and that gets voted on without any discussion. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass to lay on the table.
I wanted to actually.
I didn't either. Yeah. I motioned to table.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Chair, I would simply say, the most sincere vote here seems like your recommendation is CI, not CA. So if someone simply makes that motion, if it's commercial, you gotta pick a category after that. So you could also make the motion that it's absolutely commercial. We're conflicted on whether it should be CI or CA, but that would at least get it, you're acknowledging to the commission, this is the, this is, I think that's better than a table, because you're saying to the commission, these are our concerns, right? This is what we want you to hear. This is what we want you to talk about, right? Nobody here disputes that that's going to be commercial. It's right there on the, everybody here is going to be conflicted. It's gonna be just as many people that are upset if it's a Costco, as if it's a John Deere, right?
That's why I'm concerned. It's a commercial intensive. What does that mean?
But everybody, but it's gonna be commercial, so.
Right.
That way, you're saying to the commission, we want you to have, we want you to think about this. These are, this is what we want you to consider, right? Tabling, it doesn't tell the commission anything, right? Saying, we agree it's commercial, we think it should probably be CI instead of CA, or we're just, we want you to think more about the category of commercial. That puts it to them, right?
Right.
Yes, that, these are the CI permitted principal uses, these five, plus this one that goes into a lot of detail on what has to happen on top of the overlay.
But the point here is, whatever the category is, everybody on that dais can think of 50 things you don't want to see.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
But you can also have to remember that there are 50 steps in this process that give you different bites at the apple, and make sure that whatever it is, which we have limited capacity for who comes to us and applies, right, we have the ability to control what it looks like, control how it functions, control how it flows. And that's because of all the processes that we have set up. So we, we already had the motion that it's going to be commercial. Make it sincere and it's honest to say to the commission that we are conflicted on what category, but take some of that weight off of your shoulders, because it's not supposed to all be on your shoulders, and just say that to the commission, right? That we feel CI better than CA, or we are just, we want you to have more conversations about, and then it's gonna come back to the commission a second time, as, you know, past that.
That's what they're paying.
So, so with that being said, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
For the sake of, for the, for the.
For the record, the motion to lay on the table fails for lack of a second, so we're back to the original motion.
Yeah, just cancel it. I didn't say that.
We're back to, we're back to the original motion, and we are actually in the process of voting. We got a roll call on the votes.
For the, for the tabling?
Vote no.
Well.
Why wouldn't I motion to?
Because that motion will then die, and then the next motion will be.
Okay, so nay.
And then, no. Now, someone can entertain a new motion.
Motion fails one to three.
So for the sake of the application, to have the openness to come back, and it's not necessarily the table, but to have the ability to see all the options on the table, I feel my motion is to send this to the commission with the openness of, yes, we will prefer a CI, however, we are open to have the conversations for CA, on the sense of trusting the application.
We don't, we don't really even need a motion for this. Honestly, we don't need a motion for this. It can be just in the comments of why, what, what the motion.
I think it would be cleaner if we had a motion. Yeah, I think we need to say to the commission, this is our recommendation. I think you.
And I wouldn't say we prefer CI necessarily.
Not necessarily, but we're open, we want to see the.
We want to see the commission think about it.
Right, we have concerns, correct.
Consideration of a CI over a CA. Considerations of a CI over a CA is the recommendation for this board.
And it's not shutting down the CA.
Or any other category of commercial, right? Make it broad. Make it broad. We just want the commission to continue to think about that particular question.
And this moves it, this moves it to their desk, and they get paid, they get paid for it.
And it doesn't, it doesn't shut down CA together. It doesn't shut down CI. It just, it allows it to be open. Right.
It's an open discussion.
Right.
If that is more favorable, I'll take a verbal vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. We actually do have agenda item number 13, an informational agenda item from Gatorback five-year renewal, SE 15-01, with revised site plan and staff comments. Ms. Heck, does she walking us through this one, too?
Yes.
All right.
It should be pretty quick and easy. So we're going to be discussing this evening the Gatorback special exception, the five-year review.
It's on, right? Your microphone.
Yep.
All right.
You can't hear me?
I just didn't hear the echo. I usually hear.
Sorry. There, how's that? So the Board of Adjustment approved the resolution BA SE 1501, a Gatorback cycle park, on June 8th of 2015, for a 230-acre private recreational sports tourism facility. A condition of that approval was to, for a review of the special exception every five years. Both Attachment A, findings and conditions, and B, site plan are located in your packets. City staff has reviewed the final findings and conditions and found no issues have resulted since the last five-year review in 2020, including any code enforcement complaints. The owner is requesting a minor change to, some minor changes to the site plan, and the only department with any concerns with the fire, were the fire department, and after the conversations were had, and site visits were, visits were had, they had no more issues. They all worked those out, and that summary is coming up. So this is the original approved site plan back in 2015, and I don't have a pointer on here, or I would make note, but you'll see in the next one, the changes. This is not to scale. It looks like they're adding a huge, massive amount of parking over there. It's as small as some of those at the top, but. So see that big 30-foot road right there in the middle there? That, it's called Paradise Parking. It would look more closely, it's not to scale, in other words, yes. There comes in, and then that is new. Yep, that is new, and they took back, the bottom circle was the mountain bike park. They have removed that, and now they only have the diamond, they added a diamond, which was already on the site plan, as you can see. They've added it. So it's, it's additional, they've taken out any mountain biking. Those parking spaces, again, don't look like that. It's not to scale. No. No, they are, well, they might be, but there is no limitation on their special exception, even the old one, to have more RV parking if they need it out there, for the limited events that they do have.
The location is there, it's just a lot smaller.
That is correct.
It's just south of this Hayfield parking?
That's correct. Yep, you got it. This is the blow up, blow up of what they just placed on there, which is basically, it says that the 2015 approval requires them to submit any changes. The additional parking is the Paradise Parking. They're removing the mountain bike and the hare scramble tracks, and added the Diamondback Motocross. So they combined, they took out the Motocross and the hare, and they made one diamond, a diamond motocross track. And then the gallant, the, what, they needed to enhance their fire suppression, and that was some of the issues that them and the fire department went back to. So they've relocated the tanks on that site plan, and I'll go back and show you where that's at. And that was a better location for both the fire department and for them. And they added a pole barn that's already been permitted through our, because they knew people were gonna be under it. They came through and then got their permits for it, for the food truck area, so that people have picnic tables and they could eat underneath there. But that area that they're talking about, if you can see up to the right, is that right there.
So the pole barn is right here.
Yep, and go just to your right, and that's the, where the, the tanks are located.
This is already an elevated area where the, over the tower is to sight all the
Exactly.
All the race.
And it helps with gravity for when they gotta get water down to any place for any fires or anything that happens.
The mound is maybe 25 feet tall, plus the tower, viewing tower for the race officials.
Right. So we went in and discussed our code enforcement with our code enforcement officer. They have not received any violations over the last five years. There were minor revisions, what staff considered minor revisions to the site plan. There was no, nothing to increase the amount of people going out there, nothing to make it more onerous on residents that live there. And staff was gonna suggest to you all, and gonna ask the commission whether or not it passes or not, that these approvals become administrative, and only bring any major changes to the Board of Adjustment in 2020, in 2030. This is, with no real changes, I feel like we're not wasting your time, but we're meeting the, we're meeting the requirements of the special exception. But if there are minor administrate, minor changes, it can be amended, we're asking that it can be done administratively, and we'll ask the city commission the same thing as well.
Does the board have any questions, staff? We don't have any public to ask questions on. We're not in quasi.
A quick, quick question.
Please.
When I'm looking at the Google map of it, so that I could get like a, you know, more color view, the parking appears to come off the main roadway or driveway. And is it, are they gonna go parks, like go, create a road to go straight to parking, or do they have to go around the water?
No, there's a right main road, right spine road, right down the middle.
There's a big road that comes down the middle here.
Right, but then there's.
Then there's a roundabout.
Okay.
All the teen parking is along the Supercross track.
So are they gonna go between the two water, I don't know if you wanna call them lakes, or?
It's, it's like a circle here, and they go here, goes this way, and this all goes to parking, this goes this way, and this all goes to parking.
And that's mud bog. They have a mud bog.
It would connect here.
The connections above it.
They're going around. That's what I was gonna ask. Okay.
They're going above it.
Yeah, so it's like. There's no, you can't get into any of the track areas.
Got it.
From any of the parking areas.
Perfect. That was my first question.
Blocking area or on a dirt bank.
Second question is, not directly to this one, I'm not referring that, but just in general, when, when you're talking about revisiting to special permitting, is it ever been, or was it created for the purpose of removing the special permit?
Yes, and that would be a major reason why we bring it back. And you can bring that back anytime. It doesn't have to be the five years.
Right, if there's a violation that's severe enough or whatever, so, but like, would the board ever get like a notice of these administrative choices, or like if there were concerns that were addressed? Because it's actually kind of nice to know that the fire department was doing their job and all that, especially when they get told that we're, they're charging too much or something. That's, that's the only reason why I said that.
Well, I mean, we don't, if it was administrative, it would just come in, we would be, we would put on our calendar for every five years to review it. And if there's any minor, if it was all minor, we would do it administratively. If there was anything major, like they were tripling the size of the track and bringing in, you know, two-thirds more people at each of their events, then that would be way above what the special, initial special exception had. This is an informational item, more so for you all. There's not even a vote that you need to take. It was to bring it to you for information. We will be bringing it to the city commission, or, I'm sorry, to the Board of Adjustment. I said city commission earlier. I meant the Board of Adjustment, next Monday, so that they know, and they will, you know, we'll, we'll ask them about the administrative stuff, and I can relay your concerns.
No, I was just curious. I think the only thing that I would, if there's gonna be additional parking and more RVs, like as long as they're within the limitations for overnight stays, that it stays within those terms of special events.
Yep, that's.
And people aren't coming, you know, they're gonna use it as an RV park later on or something like that.
Oh, no.
That's the only, the only thing I would put a caveat in.
Yep. All right, did anybody have any questions regarding their updated changes to the, going forward for the, the next five-year cycle? Yes. All right. Yes.
I lost my agenda. Yeah, no. Do you have any topics for members to discuss? Going once?
The Newbury High School lacrosse teams, both the boys and the girls teams, are looking for sponsors. So if you have a business, or you have a family that you want the voice of the Newbury Panthers to shout out on the field, that would be me. I'm very glad to take money off your hands and put it to good use for our student athletes. Thank you.
Going once, going.
Just wanted to announce the budget governmental, the budget workshop for governmental funds this Wednesday at 6:30, right here at City Hall. If you want to go on social media. this Wednesday at 6:30, right here at City Hall, if you want to go on social media and make any claims about things, always a good idea to watch the budget hearing first.
Mr. Chair, can I make one more public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, on behalf of the board and citizens of Newbury, wish you happy birthday. I took it! To wish our city manager, Jordan Marlowe, I almost called you Jordan Polo, sorry about that, Jordan Marlowe, that's my husband's name, my husband is Jordan, happy birthday, thank you for all you do for the community, we appreciate you, and we're greater because of you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, we're adjourned. Your birthday present.